Welcome everyone to the Town of Union City Board of Trustees meeting April fourteenth, twenty twenty five at sixteen AM in Town Hall. One oh one North Elm Avenue, Union City, Oklahoma, seven three oh nine oh. Mr. Ryan, would you bless us with your...
Dear Oklahoma, thank you for this day. Thank you for this town. Thank you for the many blessings you've sowed. Thank you for allowing us to get here safely and watch over you, goddess and goddess. As we leave, uh, watch over us as we, uh, have a meeting for this town and make good choices. You hear that, am I right? Amen.
Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bob Grader.
Present.
Ryan Dawes.
Present.
Keith Simmons.
Here.
Seth Fisher.
Here.
James Cramble.
Present.
All right, number five, consent agenda items, all matters which are under consent are considered by the Town of Union City Board of Trustees to be reheated and will be enacted by one motion. Any Board of Trustees member may however remove an item from the consent agenda by request. I have a motion on five A, B, C, D, and E.
Make a motion to adjourn the consent agenda.
A second. Is that Ryan?
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. All do your favor.
I have...
All right, I have a motion for... All right, number six correspondence, no action. Number seven, financial reports. At the close of business, March thirty first, twenty twenty five, bank balances are as follows. ARPA's empty capital improvements, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Capital improvement first national, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Community events at twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Federal asset forfeiture at seventeen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. General fund at two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Referenced empty state asset forfeiture at six thousand, fifty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Street and alley at twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Traffic bonus refund is fifty-six thousand, four hundred and three dollars and forty cents. Municipal authorities at six hundred and ninety-six thousand, nineteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Municipal deposit fund at fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Union City Police Department Community projects, fifty-five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Dispatch is at twenty-three thousand, six eighty-one, seventy-nine cents. Fire department is at eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. Union City Police Department is at three hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Total amount of funds successful to town in Union City are two point, two million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents. Department of Union City codes, of course, not... Say it again.
You like to get codes.
Okay. You want me to skip to her? You drive all the way back to Houston tonight?
No, sir.
Oh, really?
She's gonna drive further away than... I'm gonna drive further away. I'm not gonna drive away. I came here though.
Yeah.
It's not happening.
I thirty-five was your friend.
Um, it's supposed to be. It was not my friend this time.
All right, well, yeah.
Because when I came off of forty-five and got off thirty, I knew I was going wrong. Like, I knew I was...
Do you want to say how you...
I, I, it's twelve A.
Huh?
Twelve A.
All right, moving to twelve A, consideration possible approval, non-namical revisionary sentence of the I three vertical software for replacement of current GFC utility bill. You may have a stage.
Well, thank you, sir. For those that, I didn't meet, I'm Tammy. I'm, my name's Tammy Richardson. She's up there. Everybody has one of these little booklets, little folders, and what I put in here is everything that I went over with Tammy. It's the cost summary, it's a monthly and yearly breakdown, a sample of the bills, what y'all's bills would look like, and then information about the software, about our work order system, and about our print and mail system. So y'all have all of that. And Mr. Ferguson, you're the one who looked at the contract, right?
She's just seen your nameplate. He's actually filling in for Paul.
I, I'm with his office, so...
Okay. So he, he's the one that looked at the, okay, perfect. Take a, is it this one or that one?
Which one?
No, here's the contract. Yeah, I think you have the contract.
No, there's one up there with Paul as well.
Okay.
Yes, we have a file.
So, the, the one thing that I want, I have, I have a three-year with me because we normally do a three-year or a five-year. I did talk to my legal. We will do a one, however, I, I need you guys to understand that you are not protected with a one-year. A three-year with the price changes and everything that's going up and down and crazy, you're, you will be protected for three years except for, the only thing that goes up is postage because, you know, that's a hard cost. But anything else is gonna stay for three years. That's why I did it as a five-year, but a three-year, but I have a, I have a three-year with me and I have a one-year as well. But you're gonna go through a, a lot of implementation for a one-year and I'm not gonna say that prices aren't gonna go up, Mayor, because I don't know. I just would much rather you be protected for three years.
Well, and so I think one of the first things I would ask is, how do other cities handle that, you know? Because I'm under the impression the city cannot make a contract for more than a year.
Oh, I have, I have several in Oklahoma. Uh, Salina's under a five-year, Wempehunka is under a two because of their attorneys, and they just re-sign again. And I have Texas, I mean, they, five years, because we do three or five, the one, and inside that contract, and I know, uh, Mr. Ferguson saw it, there is a termination clause. I think it's ten, I think it's number ten. Within ninety days, I mean, if you are, if you are done, something's not going right and you're not happy, everybody, Tammy wants to kill me because something's not working. You give me a ninety-day notice, you're out of the contract. So you are protected, but I'm, I have, most of them are three or five years.
So lawyer? Why don't we need one year instead of longer?
I do not know. I did not hear that conversation.
She had better than my phone.
I think he, because inside that contract, it says, you know, it'll auto, auto-renew unless you don't every year. So you get a three years that you are, you are, your prices are locked for three years. You do one year, those prices go up, you do the auto-renew, whatever pricing is at that time, you go to that pricing. There's, I, there's not anything I can do about it.
We do a five-year where it go down to like eight thousand?
No.
A year?
No. I had a five-year.
It's not negotiable.
I had a five-year. And I, I always start with a five-year simply because if you've ever been through implementation and you've ever gone through what she's about to go through, you don't wanna do it for just one year. Because it is a lot of stuff.
Well, I mean, realistically, I mean, my only thought process is whenever I went through my classes, I said that the city cannot undertake a financial obligation.
It's not a, technically not a financial obligation, it's a service agreement. So like all of our stuff, our taser, for that's on, our body cam for Linslock, they're all on three-year terms because it's a service agreement. You're paying annually for that service. All, all the contract is, is it locks in your prices for, for that, that period.
And with all the, the pricing that...
So pricing does manage, our prices go down too?
Of course.
Or we just lock them wherever they...
You're locked in. You're locked in. Is that what you think?
I'm sure I'm bothering you. Three times.
Yeah, you are. Yeah, I gave you, I gave you kudos for that.
Because you're gonna pay those five years.
But, the, the thing is that it will, um, with all the uncertainty that is happening right now, once everything settles down...
There's no tariffs on this, is there?
But that's maybe Houston.
Ah, welcome to Union City.
Trust me.
We're just bored of my river down here. Tell me your kids loud.
I was like, was that a child? I was like, I'm not seeing a child. But also, I wanted to show y'all the software, if you wanted just to see a little bit of it, I brought my, I brought my computer.
Yeah, we'll let him draw the comments, see what comments take you, and we'll follow along with you.
Okay. Well, it's, I think it when I can't see y'all, because I feel like I'm talking with my back to you, but I have to. Um, it's cloud-based, which means one hundred percent, you can work from anywhere, and a lot of people don't like to hear that, but you can work from anywhere. Because it's not, there's no hardware, there's no software, there's no nothing, it's a link. And it's a link that is, um, designed just for y'all.
I don't like that, that's gonna wake the bother.
But this is what I, and I went, I showed, um, Tammy all of this, and it's a lot different from what you have right now. Everywhere you see green, green means go, that means she's able to, um, edit anything in here, she can transfer. Um, if somebody is moving from one, one address to another within the city, she doesn't have, she'll final it out and hit transfer, and all the information goes to the new address. So it's very automated for, up here is everything that she is able to, can you not see it? Come, come, no, come see. This is gonna be your baby.
I have the...
Um, but everything up here is everything that she will do for the entire city. This is what she'll do for the entire city. Everything on this side is everything that she's able to do.
I have the I three vertical program.
No, it's not.
Are you, uh, online?
Yeah, I am. I don't know why it's, it wasn't working. Why is it not? It's something to do with my mouth, obviously. It's do, it's moving, there we go. It's moving here, but it's not moving. It's not moving on that TV screen. Hold on, we're gonna try something there. There we go. Um, so everything on this side is everything that you can, she's able to do. They'll take deposits, right? Okay. She's able to add deposits, um, she can run reports off of the deposit, she can, this is really, I can't see it here. Um, this is the rate code. So you are able to bill up to eleven metered or non-metered services. So water, gas, sewer, trash, um, yeah, the bulk water, because we, we checked on that. Anything that you will do...
Per customer, what are you talking about?
Per customer.
Eleven different things per customer.
Yes.
I got you.
And then you have, um, this thing is so weird. Why is it doing this? Probably because I have it.
Eight thousand dollars.
No.
Four thousand. Nine hundred bucks.
No, I can see it on my screen, I can't make it do it on the screen right here. I can't make it do it on here.
I saw about that twenty-five hundred a year.
I can't make it do what I want it to do on the screen. Well, this is not good. And there's also on there, there's a miscellaneous, a miscellaneous, um, that you can use for anything, like grease, um, inspections, because you can use it for anything. It's a miscellaneous rate code. Um, your penalties, your, um, you told me penalties, the late charges, all of that, that would be one of the eleven. This is where all the work orders, who does the work orders in here? You? You? Are you a public works guy? Um, so the work order system, you absolutely love, because it's mobile as well, you can have mobile. Um, so how many guys help me fill?
Two. Chief Jones and Chief Hunter Jones.
Chief Jones.
Chief Hunter Jones.
Chief Hunter Jones. Um, so anything that happens inside the system, if it's created here in the system, and she creates it, she assigns it to you, and she hits save, it goes to your phone. And then same thing with the other gentleman who's ever out in the field, they, it'll go to their phone. They can actually open it, they can add pictures, they can add notes, they can add equipment, they can do whatever they need. When they're finished, they hit close, and it comes into her system as a closed work order within three to five seconds. And instead of, how many do you, um, do you manually read any meters?
Um...
Maybe a few?
One, but we're actually gonna change it, it's coming.
Okay, then never mind. Never mind about that. She also has, inside here, she has a point-of-sale system, it's a cash register. I mean, she's able to take payments here, she's able to, um, it doesn't let me have a cash drawer. I don't know why, but it doesn't. But you're able, she's able to do all, if somebody walks in and takes, she can take a payment right here. Um, we have an online payment portal that they are able to, um, let's see if this, for anything, it's gonna work. That you can push all of your customers to, to the portal, and they are able to actually manage the accounts themselves.
Are there fees, extra fees for paying online?
Right, the, the credit card companies? Yes. I mean, the credit card transaction is three and a half percent of whatever that amount is paid, there's not a set amount, so if the bill is a low bill, it's three and a half percent of that, and it, it, it tells them that when they're making their payments.
And they pay that for you?
Yes, no, the city does not pay that, no.
So basically, three and a half dollars and fifty cents per hundred.
So, um, they're able to, do y'all have a portal right now? A payment portal right now? Can they pay online right now?
Yes.
Pay online, they can't, they can't see their bills like that.
Right.
Oh, they can't? Um, because they're gonna be able to see their billing history, everything that we pull from GFC, everything that we pull over, whatever history you tell me to pull over, we're gonna pull over. So they're not gonna lose their history, they're not gonna, they're still gonna be able to see their history, their transactions, how they paid, when they paid, they're able to manage their account. So this email bill notification, your bill is due, your bill is about to be past due, your bill is past due, it's those kind of email notifications that they'll receive. They can sign up for paperless billing, which takes them out of the print part and puts them into the email part, so they will no longer receive a print bill, they'll only be in the email. And they can sign themselves up, she doesn't have to do it. They can sign themselves up, they can, and if they don't like it, they can take themselves out of it. They can undo it, they don't have to come in here and she have to do it. The same thing with reoccurring credit cards. ACH or credit card, they can sign up.
So they can set up ACH all right to?
Yes.
Can they do one-time ACH every, every month, or is it just credit card?
No, it's ACH or credit card.
And ACH doesn't charge a fee?
It's a one, yes, it does, it's one dollar.
A one-dollar okay.
It's one dollar for ACH, and it's three and a half percent for the credit cards. That's through the credit card transaction company. Um, but again, the, the customer pays it, not the city, and that, that is...
Can they choose their automatic maker-up date?
Yes.
Or not, they can?
Yes, they can, and hopefully they do it to where it's not late.
Correct, yeah, I was just curious, if they can adjust it?
Right, because, you know, sometimes on an ACH, when it, I, I don't know, I know which, this is, and I live in a neighborhood, but my, my water company is probably one of the biggest ones in my area, and they were just, it's EDP, and they were just bought by Infomart. Infomart is huge. And I do, I have mine set up, you know, all like this, it still sends them a paper check. It's still, it's not automatic, and this is a huge company. But, so it is an automatic one, they can set it up, they can take themselves out, they can change the dates, it can be checking, it can be savings, whatever, they can do it. She doesn't count it.
So each customer would set their own account up?
Yes.
We would set on the lane and say, hey, over here.
Yes, I mean, everything's coming over, right? Everything is coming over from GFC.
Right.
But for this, for the portal?
Right.
Yes, they have to go in, they have to sign up, because they're gonna create a password, you know, their username, password, and then they're gonna put all their information in there.
Perfect, okay.
And then they are able to, um, if you have, I can't remember if you told me this or not, um, if you have a person who owns more than one property, right? They can manage them all right here. They can do them all right here, and they can make all their payments right here. We have multi-owners, so if you have somebody who owns like ten houses, we can do multi-owner, they make one payment however they want it distributed. We have all of that. Is there anything you wanted me to show them that you, there is...
Are all these features under one cost or are some features extra?
Yeah, it's all on...
Do you see this right then?
Yes, it's all, and the other, this one right here, that, this one right here. This, everything right here at the very top is everything that comes in the software, this software right here. And you get two free rate changes. Do y'all change your rates very often?
Once a year, hopefully. Every time Alrena does. But sometimes it's like... Buy our water from Alrena and they... We're private system, so we just...
Okay. So, because you get two free rate changes where we'll do it for you, we're gonna do it, but we're also gonna teach her how to do it. So you, you know, she may wanna do it, we're gonna teach her how to do rate analysis if she wants to learn how to do it. I mean, that's strictly gonna be up to her, but we're gonna do it for you if you want us to. But everything is in here.
So is that per year or is that...
For, oh, per year.
Per year.
Per year, yes, rate change.
Rate change, yeah.
Yeah, rate changes per year. Some, I had, I was talking to a, a, because I cover four states, and I was talking to a city in Alabama, and they have not changed their rates in over fifteen years. And I'm like...
Wow, that sounds like the old Union City.
And I was like, wow, these people are gonna be, I mean, they're gonna be angry because they're doing a rate change.
They were.
They were doing a rate change, and it wasn't gonna be a small one, you know, because they, they got a new mayor in, they got a new panel, new board, and they're like, what is happening?
So how, how auditor, everybody, because it says right here conversion, parallel billing audit, is that, that a audit in the kind of a billing system?
This is for, this is for the implementation, this is where we're going to GFC, and we're going to pull that information from him, our implementation engineers, because this is the implementation part.
Hello, Tom.
Oh.
How are you, sir?
Very good. I'm better than I, because I told Bruce, I thought I felt for state this morning, and then I had a kind of a relax from the chemo, but I feel better.
Good, good, good. Well, we're always glad to hear from you, so...
I'm happy, happy to discuss, calling anytime, you know.
Could you explain to me why we need to be a year contract instead of three or five?
Okay, so the, the constitution basically says that a city or any, any governmental agency cannot sign a contract for more than one year because you can't, you can't obligate funds beyond one year. You can, you can sign a contract where they have those repeated renewals, which is what that one does. So that contract only needs to say it's a one-year contract, and then it's got renewal language in that same paragraph. So it, it'll automatically renew, it's, it's kind of a substance, as you would, um, that you're, you're really entering into a longer-term contract, but you're only obligated, you can only obligate the town for a one-year contract. And they may say, well, gosh, we got to get five-year contracts in other places, but that doesn't make it right because of the, the restriction on obligating funds beyond one year.
All right. Would you like to retort on that?
Absolutely, I will. Hi, Mr. Ferguson, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
I'm great, I'm sorry I didn't get to meet you.
Well, I'm sorry you haven't been able to meet me as well because of circumstances.
Well, I, I completely understand, I completely understand. Um, the one thing that, because with, normally our contracts are three or five years, and what it does for the city or the water district, because we sell it both ways, is it locks those prices in for that, the term of the contract. And I, I brought both, I brought a three-year and I brought a one-year, but I just need to make sure everybody understands that when it goes to auto-renewal after one year, if we've had a price increase, the city is going to take the price increase. Because the three-year locks your prices in for three years. And I have others in the state of Oklahoma, and they have, they have signed, one signed a two-year, one signed a three-year, and another one is looking at a three-year. Because it locks them in, and it's simply because we just don't know what the pricing is going to be like over the next couple of years, so...
Sure.
Um, that was the only reason. But I did bring both, I did bring both with me, um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that come one year from the time of her going live, if a price increase goes, the city's gonna take the price increase.
And, and, and that is the risk that, that goes with having absolutely a one-year, one-year deal. I mean, I suppose you could have some language in, in some other portion of the contract that said that you, you agree that if there are renewals of, uh, one, two, or, you know, any renewal, uh, year, uh, up to three years would have the same price. But you just can't, the, the city, by the Oklahoma constitution, cannot enter into a contract for more than one year.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that everybody understood that.
That's, that's the price you pay for being a municipality in this situation.
And, and that is not a problem at all, I did bring both.
Okay.
All right. That's all I had, man, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you taking your time to, to help us out on this.
Happy to do it.
All right, well, thank you, Tom, have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
See you, Bruce.
I'd also like to comment on something, frankly, um, I did attend a meeting with Tammy and Cami on March eleventh, because we had some questions about the implementation costs of all this cover, and, um, the answers the town was able to give were closer to what I thought were ideal, so we're not just paying a few thousand dollars for a simple database suggestion, it's more inclusive for that.
Well, that made it English.
It means... They're not doing the minimal. Yeah, it's, it's a full implementation in terms of what we're paying for.
Oh, yeah, you're, everything that you, as much history that she wants to be brought over from GFC, how long have you been on GFC? Anybody know?
Too long.
I think we were twenty-one years and it was here when I started.
Oh.
They should, wait a six months.
Oh, that's a long time.
Mo just set it up for us.
I love that. Um, so, if you want...
He parted the red seat and then brought it.
And then brought, he brought y'all over, I think. If, um, I mean, if you want all thirty years or twenty years, you can have it, or we'll do ten, and then we'll come back and get the rest, you know what I'm saying? Just so we can...
A lot of the history's been deleted over the years.
Ma'am?
Jack and him went through and deleted lots of history over the years.
So how much do you think you have? Maybe ten, five?
You don't even have that, I don't...
Oh, you don't even have five or ten years? So whatever you have.
Maybe five, probably.
Okay, we'll bring it all over, we'll bring it all over. Um, the only thing that does not come with data, because data's data, right, or PDFs. And so, and I'm, you guys have servers here, so I'm sure you have them on your servers here. But PDFs are very hard to attach to data, and you can attest for that, so...
Yeah.
It's very hard to find the, the mapping of it. I am by no means a technical mappy person, I'm not, I don't even say it, I just know how to work the software.
The good news about most of Jack's stuff is there's a way to export to CSD, so in terms of data field and things that are available within what they have been captured, um, I mean, the most we'd have to do is work with Jack for me to, for people to export, but from what I've seen, it's all there in some data field.
Right, and you'll be very involved with my implementation team, you know, because Right, and you'll be very involved with my implementation team, you know, cause they're gonna, they're gonna rely on you because you know that system, they don't know that system. And to get the information from the GFC system, they are going to rely on you, that you're gonna rely on them because they, that's why they do what they do. I don't, all I see is a bunch of numbers and all that kinda stuff and it all flows.
Have you ever done anything to take it over from this guy's stuff before?
I have, um, talked to, I, I, this, Jack and I have talked several times and he sent me a list of twenty of his customers and the majority of them are way too small and can't afford our software, but they love our software, so they're trying, it's budget season right now, so they're trying. But no, not any of his yet. But Mr., uh, Mr. Brown sent me, uh, his customers.
For free?
Yes, he did.
That sounds enough.
He knows he's getting that, he definitely knows.
He's, he's, he's ready to reply, I mean, I get it.
But his company wasn't worth selling, my point, normally if you had anything worth anything, you would've been able to sell that list.
Oh, that's true, I didn't even think of it that way, I wasn't thinking of it that way, I'm thinking, I'm coming.
There's no value to it at this point.
Yeah, he's ready to go to the lake, that's what he's ready to do. But, um, it does so much more than, um, it does so much more than the software that she has right now. She's able to, um, run all kinds of reports. These are, this is all the billing reports and then there's customer reports that she's able to run, payment reports, work orders. This is everything for, for the city because it's up here and this is where she'll do her billing and I promise you she will not be left alone, she has me and she has my entire implementation and, and training team that will be here. And she has a direct line to me. She does, she has my cell phone number, as I was freaking out on the road today, cause I didn't know where in the crap I was.
Jamie, isn't there classes or trainings?
Ma'am?
Trainings or classes?
Oh, absolutely.
Your paperwork for thirty hours for a hundred dollars.
Absolutely, and, um, here, let me show, hopefully this will let me do it. We also have, and we do this for every one of our customers, there's a flare there. Can I show you this? Come look at this. So this is all, this is just some of our customers, but we do this, this is my implementation team. Every phone call that we have, every meeting that we do, every training, everything is recorded and it's here. She can come back and she, at ten years from now, she can come back to this system and she can pull, if she was pulling ahead. Here's all this onsite training, here's training, ev- everything that we do with her is gonna be housed here and she can go back. And this does not cost you anything, we, we handle this, we take care of this, but all of her training docs, and we don't, we don't just hand you a manual, it's a huge manual, they're all separated out so she can go and find exactly what she needs to do if she needs the, like, needs a little bit of help and it's all right there. She can download them, she can print them, she can do whatever she wants with them, but this is every training that we've done with the town in Torina.
And I, and I know we're small and she's gonna be the primary focus, but I think it's gonna be important that Michelle takes every one of these as well and if Teresa opens a doing it, Teresa does, anybody on staff on this side of the building needs to go through all of this, the exact same. That way, that way if we have a turnover or anything changes, if somebody retired, whatever the scenario is, uh, we have other people within the building who are trained.
Absolutely.
So, so, and they all connect, anybody with a sign-in to this program, this software can.
And I will make sure all of them do it.
And, and forgive me, are we paying per sign-in or?
No.
No, it's as many people, we, we, we can have, okay.
Yeah, it's software as a service.
Okay.
And so there's one license, it's unlimited users, unlimited space, she can scan documents in, she can do whatever she needs to inside the system, there's no much, cause you're in the cloud, you're truly in the cloud.
Yep.
And our, everybody asked me this too, well, where is our da- our, our data stored, I don't know, house? Some is on the east coast, some is in the, in the central United States and some are on the west coast, we don't leave them all in certain places. I have no idea where they are, cause it's, it's evidently it's top secret, that you can't know where your data is, I don't know, why do they do that?
In China.
No, it's not.
They was on web services?
Yes, it's AWS, it's AWS and which is, you know, and, and we also have, we have two amazing cybersecurity teams. I mean, women is not going to win. We never, I do not get anyone to say it, there's never been a breach and we've been in business for sixty-five years, so, no breach.
AWS, on platform, it's a pretty good automation to be on.
She will be the one that does the, like, all three of them, everybody in that office, if Mayor, if you want to be inside this system, we'll give you a login. I don't know if she wants you in the system, but, you know.
Well, but that, but that goes back to each sign-in, like, let's say, let's say we do allow, uh, or let's say, well, does get a sign-in. Um, you just eliminate his abilities as to making changes within that, probably, you can change each person's thing, right?
We can lock him down, yes.
So, yeah, cause so, um, yeah, I, I, as a board, I would like to see a copy of what, um, access is available and which ones we can lock out or allow.
It's.
Um, we'll let them have the input on that, obviously, but, um, I think it can be very important at times for, you know, some people will not have the, the full access of certain things.
Oh, absolutely, and that, again, we're gonna, let me show you this right here.
Yeah, read-only, you know. I, I have a whole lot of read-only software that works tonight.
Do you, do you see this part right here, over here, I call it the hamburger menu?
Okay.
Okay, this is where the magic happens and this is where we're gonna set up the, the system and we're gonna teach her, whoever the admin is, and I'm sure, I keep saying you, Cammy, I've, but if you're the admin, this is where we're gonna, all permissions can be set up, this is where everything is gonna be set up. I'd have to get that for you because that is, comes from my, my engineer, I don't know all the fields.
So, um, the other side of that question is, is being so small, right? And we give her full admin capabilities, okay, and she signs in, how much, and you may already know the answer to this, I apologize for asking. So she goes in and makes changes to admin things, you know, changing, you know, what access Michelle has, for instance, okay? Can you then go back and look at, like, within her sign-in, at each type of change she is making along the way?
It's audit system, it, it has.
Is there a history of every, of every click, I guess, basically? Yeah, activity log?
Cause the beauty of our system is it, um, it logs every single stroke that's made inside the system. So it will, it's great for audits, it's great for, um, she can pull of, oh, cause I'm on an account. She can pull an activity report, um, per employee, you can do it for employee, you can, our user, if that's what, you can do it that way. And so anything that is changed.
Is there a way to set up a two-party approval for, for instance, a credit or a fee removal or any of those types of things? Where it's, there's two people within the building that has to, to approve before a credit can be issued or a, uh, fee removal?
I don't know, I'm going to say yes, but I don't know for one hundred percent sure because nobody's ever asked me that question. But that, you are able to set up permissions of who can do what.
Can we get, can we get a report each month of what fees were removed and what credits were done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all we need?
Yeah, it's up in the reporting.
Okay, so we can look at those reports.
Yes, it's up in the reporting and anytime she makes, anybody makes changes inside the system, you're able to see. Especially if you know the, if you know the, um, you could run an activity report for the whole thing for anything that she's touched, anybody's touched. If he got in, you could run a report that whatever the mayor did, so you are able to see.
I think I'd be, she'd be like, this is where he screwed it up.
This is where he was not supposed to do.
I just, I just wanna know that there's checks and balances in place.
Yes, there are.
To where it's not just protecting the employee, but it's also protecting any types of problems.
Absolutely, absolutely, I absolutely understand that and.
Because there, what happens, that was what I've seen over the years, is let's say there has been changes made within that, that certain account or something and someone starts trying to put blame on, on Jamie, for instance, if she hasn't done anything wrong, then.
Yeah, right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, so, so, I just called her a geek boy's name, that she's gonna kill me, but anyway, what, but whatever changes she, hey.
Well, she's like, who's Jamie, I haven't met that.
Well, whatever, whatever changes, like, let's say she hasn't made any changes to an account and, um, let's say she hasn't made any changes to an account, the changes have been made and then they start to play, put blame on her, that she has to go back and look.
Well, she's gotta do a full report.
Okay, then we can look at that, yeah.
Anything like, this was done, I can't see this, there's such a glare right here. Anything that is, let me go in here and change something, hold on.
Username, username.
And then, like, this is where it was, this is what was the field they were in, this is what it was before, nothing's there. This is what they changed it to, the date it was changed, what it was, and the username and number. So everybody's gonna have a username, everybody's gonna have a sign-on, everybody's gonna have that.
That username and number, there is no way for an admin to go in and kinda through the back door, take that username and number, use it and open it up.
No.
Okay. I have one question on that, just to, cause I haven't asked you this question. Um, I'm assuming in the event log, it would tell who reset a user's password and link?
Yes.
And that's how you cover that? As far as like admin, you always have the rights to reset someone's password in case they're locked out via an event log that says this person changed their password on this day.
Anything that, it does, anything that is changed in the system, it will report it.
Any other questions like that that you have, please, you're, you're, you're more familiar with this stuff than me, I'm, I'm, I know it from like a eighty million. I just want there to be, uh, an ability for our auditor and/or, you know, uh, a ward, a ward, those things, if, if there was anything that we needed.
And when we get down to it, Keith, is when we're going through implementation, before we go into implementation, you just give them to Cammy, tell me, I want this locked out, I want to make, and I will give it to them and they will send it to me and I'll give it to you. I just don't know all of it because I don't dive deep, deep, deep into the system, I just know it does it.
That, that was my main concern, I mean.
And no, and I, I understand that.
It's just like body cam for police, yeah, they're, they're as much for the officer as they are for us, as the same for us, I want in the future, cause whether there's been wrongdoing or not in the past within this community, we aren't able to prove it either way, right? And so, um, moving forward, you know, we want to protect the employees as much as we do the downed assets and much.
Anything that's changed, it will show up on the log.
Okay.
And you can pull the log many different ways.
And this is beneficial for more than one reason, cause like if you determine that like only IT needs admin for whatever reason, like, cause the sheer amount of permissions, I wouldn't wanna be the only admin because if I get hit by a bus, maybe a pain.
Yeah, and I, and I, uh, I mean, obviously I think that's a discussion for all of us, but I, I agree, I think there needs to be two admins. Um, and, and I think, you know, each year you, you reevaluate during, whether, during employee, you know, evaluation time.
Yeah, I'm the last guy you want.
I'm just, but this is a big deal.
That's a great question, it is a very big deal, it is a very big deal.
This, this, in my opinion, is gonna solve a lot of problems for us long-term, so.
I, I've heard that from a lot of, cause I deal with a lot of rural water as well, rural water, very small district and the thing that it does, the automation that it brings for the entire office, it will, it's gonna make her life so much easier too. Or whoever does the billing, I don't, I keep looking at you, but it's you. Um, but, yes, it does a lot of automation.
She tells us she does, though, you don't really.
You don't know?
No, I just sit in my computer and find out.
Every time I call, she's busy, so I know she does something.
Yeah, good, good.
I know she does something, but.
Cammy with a pair of eyes, she's making up random numbers.
And.
Well, it eliminates a lot of human errors.
Yeah, so, now, let me ask you this question, so, let's say, just for fun, that somebody was skating on here and they weren't issuing the cutoffs and stuff like that that should be issued, would that throw a notification to the admins that no cutoff was ever issued when it should've been issued or?
I don't, I don't know that for sure, but if a, if an account is delinquent, right, if it's, cause there's a delinquent process, there's a collection process and you have to do this before you do this, before you do this, it's an actual process. So I don't know if it will flag somebody if somebody didn't do a cutoff, that I don't know that I would find out.
But it comes to link with it, it's flagged as?
It, oh, it, absolutely, absolutely, and when, I feel like I'm like twirling, I'm twirling. Um, your bills are due on what day? Like, what's the day that they're due? The fifteenth?
Fourteenth, midnight.
Fourteenth, and they are late on the fifteenth, okay? So the penalty, whatever that, what is the penalty charge?
Ten percent.
Ten percent of whatever the bill is, correct? Okay, so on the fifteenth, we are, we will set it up to where it automatically hits the account. So, because people are people, right, they're gonna go online on the, you know, twelve oh two on the fourteenth and not think that they're gonna get hit with that penalty, it's gonna automatically.
By midnight, it'll go.
It'll, it'll hit it.
Yeah.
And so they'll have to, if they're gonna pay online, they're gonna have to pay the penalty as well.
So it's like eight, like nine o'clock or something, basically.
So, the reason I came up to that question was that screen that you had up, it showed do not cutoff this person's, whatever that is, ever.
Well, that's, you can do that, you can also say if you have elderly people, someone that is extremely ill and they're, they pay their bill, but they pay it late or something's happened, you can say permanent no penalty, you can do that. You can do permanent no cutoff, that's your discretion. She's, whoever can hit the toggle button.
She has that.
Yes, you can pull that, yes. Um, that will be in the permissions, yes, yes, that will be in there, yes, but.
Board approval.
I don't know.
That's our biggest, we want everything to be, everything, so big decision like that to be a board approval.
To a no, for a no cutoff period?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, would you, I don't know.
Kinda takes stress off of her, especially on us, and we make the decision for her, she goes.
I agree with that.
She says, well, the board decided this, now they're mad at us, not her.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if they can do that, but.
And she can blame the software, sorry, our software doesn't allow for that and you have to have board approval or something, and it eliminates, you know.
It takes it off and it's off from them.
Yeah.
Hit it all the time.
Huh?
Hit it all the time. Oh, and I think, oh, that domestic violence thing, it's a, it's a law, where you got, what, three months? We don't have that.
I'm confused, you came out left, killed for me.
See, like, there is domestic violence, if a woman looks in, uh, with a mix of violence, you don't have to have a father or nothing, can we have?
Oh, okay, I had that, yeah.
It's like a law.
What kind of, which ones, would you, like, permanent cutoff, permanent?
Permanent cutoff or any. Uh, like waving scenes and stuff.
Financial, yeah, financial.
Anything that financial.
Not if that were granted somewhere or anything, but.
Something obviously happened.
Start that conversation.
Yeah, I was, never mind, I was like, wow, okay. Now, let me ask you this, if the system, cause it's gonna have, it's going to, you are gonna be able to set up the permissions that you want, right? Whoever is doing what? If it doesn't have one that says.
Board approval.
Okay, do you have a process for that, here?
Well, my process would be that it'll be locked out to where someone sitting at this table is the only person.
That can unlock it.
That can unlock it, yeah.
If you choose, is there an option for others, if there's others, does it explain, is there an other board approval?
Is there a way that we set it up to where it emails me and I can approve it?
That it does not do. Not yet, anyway.
It could've gone for three hundred.
Not yet. No. It doesn't do it yet, it's on our roadmap, our development.
The biggest thing to me is the ability to run reports and, and, and if you have a login or if anybody at this table has a login and you, and you're, and you know how to go in and make those changes, what you have to worry about is, is the, is the, you know, future board members and/or mayors down the road gonna have, take on the initiative of, of doing that checks and balance and so. That's why I like a two, a two-party approval system to where two different people within the room are having to approve, um, or, you know.
Is this three hundred and thirty-nine meters, right? I thought we were like two forty.
Two sixty-two.
Well, yeah, but the bulk meters are a little higher.
Uh, bulk meters.
It's got one of them, no?
So we have to have it come out.
Uh, okay.
Some mayors are stressing.
Customer billing, yeah.
Or you just kinda make it a rule that, you know, along with the rest of our data here, each, each, each month we get a report that, you know, states, um, you know, any fees that are waived.
Well, I mean, it's three hundred, not, not that many pages on the board, three hundred, if you don't, I mean, it's everything we end up.
Do you have a report? Yes, sir.
This is just a different subject going on, do we have to use the bill print and pay?
No, you don't. You do not.
That's where y'all been, huh? That's where y'all do it, huh?
We, we do it. We print it, because we buy in bulk. We buy postage in bulk. We do everything in bulk. And, um, because of the way that it comes off of the software, it, it won't print on a postcard.
And this is a bill stuffing manual services?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Got you.
All right. It costs us three hundred and one dollars and seventy-one cents. Okay.
That's for us to do.
Okay.
And paper, ink, printer?
Well, I was looking around here, this one.
Oh, that's for the annual, the annual.
So it costs us three oh one seventy-one per month. And our stamp machine costs us, do you remember the number we came up with?
Eighty-nine cents per stamp.
And then, how long do they think you're going to do it?
At least two days.
We spend more than that doing it.
That's the paper and the envelope.
Because it, what ours has is, is for, for four, the first three or four months, whichever, um, you guys decide, you will get three or four free inserts, like telling everybody about the online payment portal, telling them about the new software, just giving them information on what to do.
What about like, okay, I'm talking about how, what are we going to add, like the bulk trash day and the other stuff that we send out? Is that being there? If y'all do the billing and packing and shipping.
And we need to send out like a notification about bulk trash day.
Um, if, she just have to add it, and does it go out in the bill, or does it go out separately?
Yeah, it's usually on our bill.
It's on the, she can change the messages on the bill.
All right.
Yes, on the bill, yes, but I can also go into the system for, and change it. It'll be a flag on the, um.
Make it double sided?
They have it there double sided.
The messages section?
Yes.
Is that what she would announce it?
Yeah, she can put it here, but also on the, um, on the payment portal, the customer payment portal, it does district bulletin. She can go in and change that as well.
That's what it costs us to do.
No, it's another.
And.
Sixty-five dollars a month, you said, that's what it's?
Yeah, I took that out.
It's not that far along.
So this is what it is.
This, this is the monthly, right here?
Yeah.
Right here, monthly. So for the software monthly, for the bill print monthly, for the portal, it's just, and that's why I have that on there, because I put the work order on there, the mobile work order, because the actual work order is included, the desktop.
You, you just put a fee.
But for two mobiles, because they said they had to, so I put that on, and you still have to keep it on. That's why I have the little asterisk there. So this is what it costs per month, for all of our services.
Again, it's an investment. If the town has lost some money, sort of not happy, it's a, yes, and they didn't.
This is.
I, I would pay my own bucks right now to be able to pull reports. I'm good for five. Where is this on the, I would donate five, I didn't have a whole thing on the. Where does this cost?
I didn't have a mo or anything.
Oh, I don't, they're individual here, and then they're monthly here. So here's monthly right here.
Mm-hmm.
And then this is monthly right here.
And if we lose this service, we have to pay thirteen thousand five hundred.
That's for the implementation, yes. And that doesn't even, that is not billed or paid until we start implementation.
So it's not her?
But that's nothing.
It costs us more than that for, for the district.
Yes, yeah.
Well, it costs us, her to do that. Minus costing the paper and the print and all that, it's four hundred and eleven dollars.
And her time as well.
So what all that other good stuff can you do with now that all this is going on?
She can learn all kinds of stuff.
That's like basically hiring another boy.
Yeah.
And, and so the bills are going to be, they are, they are two sided. I just did that one.
So all wants to email, tell me what to do.
You gotta go onto your portal and.
No paper, I have to save, save and save.
Write yourself a paperless, and boom, you're done. You just got to set yourself up.
And that number will down with the other time, right?
Sir?
When someone signs up for that deficit number, it happens with.
So what you're seeing is worst case. So if people start signing up for paperless, that's going to go down, so.
Well, I'm already helping.
But you gotta go to, you gotta go to the portal, sign yourself.
My wife will.
Yeah.
But the actual printed bill, there, it's the bill front and back, the bill front and back, and then it's two envelopes, and it includes postage. So it's all of it.
Now, what are the chances of this showing up on time if you just say yes?
It better show up.
If it doesn't, it don't appear, it's.
If it, if it doesn't, I will figure out why. I mean, there was one time that our machine went down and we did not charge. So absolutely, we make it right if something doesn't happen.
So we usually get our bills now while I sleep in the bus for the next month.
Who does them now? You do them? Oh, that's why.
Cammy.
Um, so you print them, stuff them, mail them, and?
Lick them?
No. I'm not going to say that. Um, when do you read meters?
Especially first.
Twentieth.
Okay, the twentieth.
Like twentieth on Sunday, so we're twenty first.
Okay, and then?
Both the two twins as possible.
Okay, and then AMI or AMR? A drive-by?
Yes, drive-by. Well, we, whoa, uh, we don't do drive-bys, we just.
I know, but I wouldn't write it. I was like, huh, I shouldn't have said drive-by. Ooh, no, it's not a drive-by, but you know, you can drive by and read the.
I don't have to drive right by it. I can sit right here and read a hundred and fifty of them before I move, and then just make one loop, so it doesn't have to be right beside it.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
So when you get those, is it, and tell me again, the meters? Census, okay.
Census, yeah, meters and census.
Yeah, so we're going to interface with the, with the software, with census software. So when you finish your reading, when you finish driving around the city and you are done, everybody's in, and you upload them, they are going to come into her software, and it's just going to?
So, how we do it now, just she does her little thing on the computer, hands me the USB, um, I go read them, come back, and she's able to print out a, um, what they call?
There's a journal?
Journal type deal, and I'm able to look at them all. I know about what everybody in this town uses, if you're not. And I keep, you use so much water, I can't clean them.
There's always water running.
It's like that, my water bill.
Well, my point is, I'll go over them real quick, just, just looking at, I can look at this journal that says, Keith Dennis, you ten dollars, I put it, um.
I don't even know, I've never, I've looked at the bill.
Oh, and I also know a couple guys, I hear you say a hundred guys, whatever. The point is, like, I just look at that real quick, and a lot of times I'll, I catch mistakes, say they didn't read correctly or whatever. Is that a possible, does that do that before it sends it to you?
Yeah, because what?
That's something I can look at before we file out the T's?
Well, when, tell me how it works right now. Is what you just said, so when you go out and read?
Right, it's on a USB, right?
Okay.
Then I bring the USB back, then she creates a report, so to speak, with that USB, and then creates a journal.
So it's not interfaced, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know how that one works, though.
No, I wear, I plug it into the water, and that's it.
It's part of the census program.
I know, but that's the software. That's the, that's the meter software. Our software is going to interface with that.
Well, and it's, it's always jacked, but she has to tell it to. So we'll have to tell yours to go to right.
We're going to interface?
Immediately?
It'll be automatic. We're going to interface with the meter software, and where you're, you're going to do your, you're going to do your thing. You can check it on your side, you can look at it.
I can't till it's on the, till she prints out that journal. I can't see anything on my computer other than it did read it.
Even on the bill, she has a chance. Yeah, I mean, because there's a.
There's somewhere we can look at them and, and I can go over and say, I know David Jones didn't use a hundred and twenty thousand or whatever.
You, I'm going to teach you how to pull a meter report, a meter read report. I'm going to, I'll teach you how to do it. Once it's all in there, you're good.
Well, we're able to do that, but more so than I would.
Yes. Because there's also, um, and I think I showed it to you, interim close, you're going to, it's going to be like a mock closing, and it will tell her if it's ready to close. If, there's one thing missing, if there's one high, one low, if something's missing.
It'll tell.
It'll tell her that she's not ready to close, and then it'll, it'll flag it at what it is, and then she can go back, fix it, or you can do whatever the case may be.
Like in, like in the beginning, we'll read them along, where I'm going to physically read it.
Yes.
We enter the numbers, and we charge them for the, and that's nothing. We charge them for the MX unit for a twelve, um, hundred and ninety dollars, by the way. Is that able to just add that to the bill? We can, we can do that, okay.
Wait, because you got up to eleven.
Yeah, okay.
Up to eleven, and I know you don't bill eleven. You have to bill like five, right? Include, not counting, I'm talking.
Water, dirt, trash. And what? Well, if they need extra product.
And then you have, um, your penalties, your deposits, all of that, because you want it to be one of your rate codes, so it hits the bill. Payment penalties, oh, payment penalties, uh, wait, no, payment arrangements. I was like, what is the word? Payment arrangements. If, if y'all do that, she can create the payment arrangement. Yeah, she can create it in the system. She, they, she can print it, they can sign it, and then scan it back in. It's going to be in here. It keeps a track of every payment agreement. So if someone has fifteen payment agreements, you know there's a problem happening right there, because it keeps all of them. It's going to, it's going to log all of them. I feel like I'm.
I both do.
You are. I know, it's so rude.
But we're listening.
I know, it's so rude. I'm trying to turn around.
Let's go back to something real quick.
Yes, sir.
So he said he runs it, he has a little USB, she puts it in, it prints out this journal. And then you're saying, when your system is tied to that system, as soon as she does that, it's going to kick over everybody's reading.
It's going to map, it's going to map it.
And then if he looks at something and says, well, this shouldn't be this or this, it's already, it's already mapped it out.
And she can go in and change it.
I got one.
And there's an interim close. I mean, she, she's not going to close until she's ready to close, and if something's missing, if something's wrong, if he sees something that, ooh, that doesn't look right, and you can go off and do, you can do a one-off and you can change it. It's a, in an interim close, she'll close, and it'll tell her what's wrong. It'll tell her if something's missing, if something's high, if something's not there.
And that change is already.
I'm sorry?
The change is already in the system.
Yes, yes, yes.
I had, uh, you said questions?
There's questions, yeah.
Do you all assume the liability and responsibility for data loss on a regular basis?
We do it every fifteen minutes. Our system is backing your system up every fifteen.
You got to hear his question, please.
And there's a reason I asked that question. I thought the answer would be yes, but some other cloud services, like Microsoft, permanent one, for some of their like office stuff, they don't back up some of your user data like on OneDrive, so not all cloud services automatically back up. And that's why I wanted to ask that question if we're going to.
She said they're, they, 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 and we call it every fifteen.
Every fifteen minutes.
Exactly, yeah.
It backs it up.
So if you lost something, you might only miss work.
The mayor got in there and messed everything up.
Yes, yes. All right, so I have another question. Receipt printer, Ebsen, blah, 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 Amazon. Is that saying, hey, buy one, leave one?
No, it says if needed.
Yeah.
It says if needed. So the credit card machine she will need, that one she will need, because it is tied to our credit card processor, that kind of stuff.
And we have one of them.
But that is for court.
Oh, okay.
And court and UV can't, can't go together.
I got you.
And the receipt printer, that's only if you need it, if you, you know, the little thing, you know, prints out a receipt. Or she can print it off of the computer.
We have a twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollar printer, so that's.
Yeah, so that's why it says if needed. The only thing that I have to tell you that you will have to have is a credit card machine. And, because she has the, she has the, she has an I three credit card machine, but it's for court, and those two cannot go together.
You may, or, if someone asks us, I'm sorry, do y'all have an app or no, it's all website only?
It's website only right now, and app is being built.
Okay.
Because we're all screaming for it. I'm like, hello.
And that would be an additional charge when the time comes?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so. I think it will be, like, you can go, we have a, we have a mobile meter reading app that is for people, that's why I ask them to keep read meters manually. And for districts that don't have the AMR or AMI, we have, it's called U Read, and same thing, you walk up, you read it, but you type it in, it tells it high and low. Uh, and we, you can find it on Apple or Droid, and it doesn't cost you anything. Not for the service, for the use of mobile, but not for that app. Because like the mobile, not the mobile, the, um, portal, that should be an app.
Yeah.
That's what we say. That should be an app.
And that would be nice for the.
Oh, it, and we're all soon.
Yeah, okay.
And but, and then, I'm not a developer, and there's just like, okay, damn, we have to do this first, and it's like, we really need this, so, but it is coming.
Sorry, I'm, I'm checking process.
Is that it?
And what was that, kind of called two ones?
I'm sorry.
Or the, say please, oh, credit card, what's that called?
For?
Arts?
One way will, one way will need.
The one we'll need. What's that one? It doesn't have a name. Six, credit card company.
That's what it is. I don't know the name of the brand, but I will be there.
No, I thought you would have said T something. T, uh, something weird.
So that's the machine that she has right now, I think.
So Ebsen is the one I use currently.
Because what we do is.
So it doesn't matter if it runs the credit card machine, we make credit card machines specifically.
Right, but it has to be tied to the credit card processor. So we get, we get them from the credit card processor. We don't make any cost. We buy it from them. Yeah, because.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah, ours is all that crazy fancy, but, um.
He only pays thousands of transactions a day. He owns the only burger going to town, none of the ten counties. Third generation?
What's the name of it?
It's Derry Mark.
Derry Mark?
Maybe wrote a country song about it.
My dog.
I don't think there is, I was hearing.
There's an R report.
Was I even asked her? I'm like, so, I'm just going to go, I'm going to head back. I'm not going to drag all the way, that is way too far. But, um, I just want to ask you something real quickly. So two-party approval, I'm going to ask about that. Um, can we put permission in the system for board approval? How about a, um, like a radio button, you know? Or? The thing is, you're going to have to tell us what those things would be, that you want board approval on, you know what I'm saying?
And the problem with that is there's too many of them.
Yes.
There's thousands of things that come up each month, that sometimes we have to make a switch.
I personally am not as concerned. I, I like the idea of two-party approval. If, if you can give, let's say, four people approval to be a part of that two-party approval. But the biggest thing means reports, reports, reports.
You're going to have the reports.
Like, yeah, if, if you can pull the reports, then you can, you can, you know, what's really difficult about us is, uh, you know, we're here one night a week per day, you know, and any extra effort that a board will put in above and beyond that, a month, I'm sorry, a month, you know.
You're here every week, and you're dedicated.
And so, so any, you know, I mean, like, I mean, so, you know, we, we, anything that, you know.
So when I get, when I get back, I will pull audit reports, what other reports would, because I'll pull them. I'll just pull it off of my, my demo, and I'll send it to you. What other ones would you like to see? Just the audit reports, um, permission reports, like permissions?
Yeah, well, it would just be nice, just for us, again, I think it's up to the administrators to decide, um, what permissions, you know, someone still has, whoever you put in charge, that's the administrators. They, they ultimately, in my opinion, need to be in charge of what people, it would just be nice for us to know what permissions are and aren't available, you know. Are you open to being in one?
What?
Are you open to being one?
Yeah, usually you have.
Yeah, usually it's your IT guy and one person on staff, not any, uh.
So Cammy, what do you think about it?
I think I'm ready to go.
Might go home?
I'd do that too. I'm ready to go.
They do say go beg your girl home. It sounds like you want to do all these.
Well, that's a good idea to have, because she's not for a change, so.
No, I really think it's a good software that we need to start with, without.
It seems like they've done this before, which is a good.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Well, we've already got a good relationship with the company.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they do the court. Have you ever seen our, our police?
The side, yeah, but we get it free from the state.
Oh, the side. Because I talked to Shannon, and I was like, have you talked to them? Because now we have nine-one-one, we have the nine-one, but you get that free from the state too, don't you? Yeah. Because we, I mean, we literally have every software. Uh, asset management? We, inside the software, inside the work order part, there is an inventory. It's not a full-blown asset management, if that's what you're looking for. Uh, asset management? We, inside the software, inside the work order part, there is an inventory. It's not a full-blown asset management, if that's what you're looking for.
I'm agreeing that they come on that. We're, we, we want to move forward, uh, with tracking the town's assets.
It has, we will train him on how to put the inventory in and all that kind of stuff, our work order guys will, um, but.
When we were audited, and we're being audited, um, that was one of the things that our, that our auditor brought up, was that we're, well, and, and in defense of them, because they're probably getting blood pressure, they keep a list, right, and it's our understanding that she did not request that list from them, um, but we want, we want something that, you know, that kept up to date and that the auditors, you know, a bunch of years, they can just, you know, go right over into their, what they be.
The, the city of Farwell, Texas is one of my customers, and they had the auditor in the, and there were reports that I had never even heard of. I mean, we're trying, I'm like, she, I said, what is it that you need on the report? And we have the report in there, but it is, was called something different. So depending on, you'll be able to pull a meter report, you'll be able to pull the inventory report, any asset that you put in there. It's just not a full-blown asset management, because it's a little bit of software.
I don't know how complex, you know, I picture us just needing something relatively simple, something that, you know, each time, each time they make an asset purchase, they can load that asset in there, and then each time they say, okay, this is an old and worn-out item, you know, and we're gonna surplus it, and then it can be surplus and then removed from that list.
Yes, they, they can do that just inside the work order.
Something simple, but something that, you know, when it's audit time.
And be able to see, for me.
Olivia, what, how much money was spent on that asset?
Yes, you will get it, yes. Because inside the work order, there is purchase orders, there's the inventory, all of that is in there. He is able to.
Now, and we'll have that with what we're paying.
Oh, the, the work order, the work order is a part of the software. It's already fully integrated. It's the mobile that is extra.
It's just like the meters and stuff, right, for that, you're not talking about the backhoe we have, or the, are you? You're just talking about.
We're talking.
What we're talking.
We're talking inventory, everything, yeah, yes, yes. Because that's an asset, I mean.
Right, I didn't know that's a part of your.
And this might be a good stepping stone, but not have to look, search out something else and just utilize it.
It's, but what I did say is not, it's not a full-blown asset management. It is an inventory. It is there for you to put your, um, all of your inventory in, be able to put the dates, what is, what model, all that kind of stuff that you need.
Do you have some kind of, I'll call it flyer, I'm just regarding, that's something that we can give to our current, something that we can, can give our current auditor that would, um, and we can say, hey, is this sufficient to me?
Please work.
Oh, is that yours? Well, that doesn't.
That doesn't, that's what we need to do.
I'd say it would be for municipal, not for.
That we couldn't do it for the police department or fire department or any of them?
No, it's just for the municipality and the, the water parts.
Not a huge thing then, maybe be able to hold three?
Get here. Oh, did it just shut off?
Yeah. And we told you about touching it a little. She knows it doesn't work, but it looks like.
We're ready for it. They don't want me playing this part very much. That's why it's logged down. I'm just gonna do it a different, I'll do it a different way. So like, this is a, this is one account, and this is, again, this is a demo site. So this is every work order that we have created for this address, this address only. But when you get into. So it's, like, there's. Again, this is an individual, so there's like for labor, there's the equipment, whatever equipment. So we will work with him, and he will click on this little button right here, and whatever equipment y'all have as an asset here that's in the system, it's gonna pop right there.
So it would just be set up as Town and Union City, municipal or whatever, as the customer, and then go in there and put the.
Oh, for, for the whole city is up here, yeah. For the whole city, that was for one account.
No, I mean for the municipal department itself. What we're trying to figure out is how to make it to where, where say, David, I need a list of everything that we have on hand. He can click the button, ran it out, and here's everything. We got, we got a backhoe, we got a generator, we got a flashlight.
It wouldn't be on the customer's.
Right, it's gonna be on the inventory, yeah.
Four hundred and thirty-seven AA batteries.
Yeah. I gotta need a one the other day.
Well, he has four hundred and thirty-seven, twenty-six. The meter inventory, so there's all the meters. That was just in the, today we did. Yep, that's what we want. Equipment maintenance, material maintenance. Can you see that? There's this flatbed, twelve-volt pump, this is where we're gonna put it all in. And so as you get, see where it says new?
Yeah.
Right there? So as you get a new piece of equipment in, you, who never does that part, would enter it right here.
Guys might have the servicing and hours.
But that's, that's not under Todd and Valdo.
No, 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 this is for the whole city.
Oh, okay.
That's for the whole city. Because we have, we have to know what you have in order for it to set up the work order system. So when he goes out to do something and he needs a backhoe, he can hit that button and drop it in the backhoe, because it's all gonna be listed right here.
Or check in, check out, like he used that backhoe on a specific job or something like that. Yeah, let's make it hard.
Well, you can, you do your services, do, um, do your hours and stuff, when you service them.
On the work order part, yes. You can do labor, you can do hours, you can do all that kind of stuff. And if you charge, do y'all ever charge a, like, a customer for something? Do you charge, if, if they had a, um, a, a main, uh, a pipe bust in their yard, that's not, that's their, that's their.
That's their rate.
Yes.
So we don't do that.
Okay.
If line busts in their yard, correct, Bill?
Yeah, if it's from the meter on, up to the meter plus.
Right. Because as a homeowner, we're responsible, that's why I have the extra.
Right, you're, you're a public, you're a home server.
I have the extra service, because I saw what that cost.
I had to pay that fee before, that's not fun.
It's not fun.
Only charge customers that break something, like a, like a meter or, most is M Q, I think, which is the thing that reaches the meter.
Right, on the, on the top of it, and then on the, on the bill, like, under that, under the rate code miscellaneous, broken meter. And you can charge them whatever it is that you charge them, and it's gonna hit their bill.
Any other questions?
Mr. IT, none?
He was on the sys, he was on the, he was on the phone with me for what, an hour and a half, almost two hours. He was in the system with me, yeah.
Can he qualify here with a contingent fund? If our budget allows it next year?
They need budget industry, Lee.
They're gonna need money, just to plan. Just to please one.
Alright, what? Alright, so, do I have a motion on GFC utility bill? Or are you gonna make some more information?
I just wanna, I'm, I'm done. On the portion about us only being able to go one year, um, does that work out?
Yeah.
I, I have the, I'll switch out the, the case that has three years, and I'll do one year, and everybody, just wanna make sure everybody understands that rates go, everything goes that.
But we have, but those rates are in here, what the one year is.
Yes, that's what the, the cost of it is, yeah.
I'm not trying to next year, I didn't think of next year, but why is all the chi's April to do it, something on sound like, or some communication or something? We're not going to see, all of the rules perfectly.
So like, I, I checked into a few things over this, like Oklahoma City. They're cheating the system. Okay, we're gonna use Oklahoma City for an example. So they have basically set up a separate entity other than Oklahoma City. I'm trying to think what the word was that they used.
And they have Tyler, they have Tyler Technology.
I think where, where it comes in is if you're obligating next year's funds.
Yes.
So you can sign a service agreement, but not contract. So you can have a three-year service agreement that, I mean, if it, if it has an out clause, it's a contract, obviously, but, um, you can sign a service agreement saying, we're gonna, we agree, we're gonna pay this much over the next three years, but if we decide to cancel tomorrow, we can cancel tomorrow, and it's not a big deal. So it's just whether you're obligating. If you're locking a contractor saying, we will pay it next year, whereas with the service agreement, you don't have to pay it next year.
But it's definitely in school, over the I I and everything?
Yeah, but it's still municipalities are, it's the same thing.
So that's a July, and if you're in, whatever, you owe somebody else, they haven't got that many prior to that. The city's not even liable for it now, legally. So it only protects the city from going over budget, but it protects me from not getting paid.
Right.
I'm probably using the wrong terminology, but I believe that they set up something that's similar to a trust. And they can do a contract through that, and do a contract through the city funds. So they just fill this trust money and then come in the back door and.
So it's, it's, it's essentially a, uh, it's like an enterprise fund, or, um, more of a fiduciary fund, where they're, the entities are paying this trust, and it's reserved for specific amounts. So, yeah, it's a separate I I, separate everything, but the entities are paying the trust and the trust can complicate that contract. But they're, they're basically paying for it outright.
That's, that's, because this question came up one year ago, this kind of issue, and still have it, we were really, when, when you guys first did the building plan for a new city hall, and we looked, you know, it was talked around, like, we need to finance that and get this done, right? And it was whether, immediately the question came up of, well, can we, you know, borrow that much money and pay that out over a ten or fifteen year period if we can only allocate funds for one year?
The only, the only way you can do it is do it forward.
Yeah, right, and that, that was.
Like, we're not gonna. We got a fire trip, we had a fire year, but there's some way to play to get it.
There's probably a lease. It's probably a lease versus a loan.
I missed it.
No, I, I, because this is gonna cost.
It's gonna cost thirteen thousand dollars to get it going, and pay all this, and years they go up double, so we just get out.
I'm, I'm with you. I don't, I mean, I, I do, I do work in my chains. As far as talking to other people and signing contracts, I do it for a living. Frozen on the whole side of the table, and I understand those, but. I think it's kind of what I was talking about, a service agreement versus kind of agreement versus a contract in words, and it's a word game. And that's, that's where, and that's, that's the conversation, it would be, because of some of the word or something like that.
But we can do a service agreement for three and B.
Correct, like, that's what I'm listening to everyone say.
Yeah.
And I think it has to do with that type of verbiage, and with, and at the end of the day, like, I mean, the reason we.
Why are they doing it properly? Sure, I'm not, I'm just thinking about it.
Yeah, the, the issue comes with obligating next year's funds and the year after that. You can't obligate those funds, because you don't have them.
Right. And at the end of the day, we just don't wanna break that rule, we just wanna do everything.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, I think it's coming down, I think it's coming down to, you know, that word, the word, the word play.
Every town has an attorney that's, you know that.
But you'll also learn that every attorney has a different opinion. If you add four of them, you're gonna get two or three different opinions.
And it depends.
Like D U.
It depends, yeah.
Three people, D U, so you get five.
You have seven attorneys, contract attorneys, you know, patent attorneys, like, everybody has their background in history.
So each one of us, whenever we went through our projects, they found that entity, that you are not allowed to go into a contract for more than one year. Anything that the city takes on as a debt has to be paid off.
Correct.
But honestly, if you look at this, and I, I could be completely wrong, but if you look at it, they're giving you an annual amount to pay. They're not giving you a sum of three years worth of contract. So if it's ten thousand, if they're giving you a bill for thirty thousand and saying you're gonna pay ten thousand over the next three years, that would be a contract. But this is saying you have an annual obligation of this amount.
Because I would like to do a three-year pending change of language from contract to whatever tone of being is necessary.
That, see, that, that's what I would do, that is, we can save us money and, uh, we're not looking at what it has to have.
This is the most important word we can, we can do. I, I mean, I, it's a no-brainer, I mean, as far as, you know, where we're at now versus where we'll be once this is implemented.
But you know it's going up every year, so, you know, I mean, it's basically telling us it's gonna go up.
You're writing out a motion, we can all wait.
Well, we got class. How many employees are there to take them?
In order for, in order for Bob's brain to work, we have to be classed. Courts are hard.
Is there anything in this program that'll auto-load paper towels and soapy dispensers?
That would be your auto-loaders. I was trying to call, um, and nobody's answering the phone.
Is that working when we try to call?
No. You have this, you call me, it comes right here.
Yeah, well, there's no way to answer the phone.
No, no. Well, this is like my boss's, so I guess they don't think they have to answer the phone, but.
You both know it, everything will be fine when I get back.
I, well, I don't know if I can change the word. I mean, I'll do it. I'll take a contract off. I just wanna make sure that I don't.
So here's what I would like to do. Is. Approve a three-year pending the agreement of verbiage, say. Like, contract to not contract, words, the language, say that it's something we can. What do you think?
Such a motion?
No, the conversation is the conversation.
I'm just ready to say it.
Are you hungry? Are you ready to go? For a three-year.
I mean, Mr. Attorney, what do you, what do you think?
I'd have to see the, I'd have to see the language, because it's pretty clear, like Tom said, and Tom's due at one.
Yeah.
So-
Do you, do you know if it's, it says contract, or what if I said, if- What, what if I said professional services?
My, my thought would be this, is, is grasp the language the way you think it needs to be, and get it to Tom, and let him take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, I've got his contact information before you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Man, I'm directly out to him, figure out what we need.
Okay, because I have to talk to my, that's who I was calling, is my attorney as well, and, 'cause I'll do it. I mean, why do you have to fire me? I just don't know, I don't think so, but, um, I'll put a agreement-
Keep password and all four states.
I got it, I got it, I got all the passwords. But, um, and I also have a friend of mine that is an attorney in Oklahoma that has moved to Texas, so I'm gonna call him too, because I worked with him with Luntuka. And they wanted a five-year, and he would only let them do a two-year. But they've already auto-renewed twice, so, they locked him in for two years, so, and he's an attorney, so, I am gonna call Garrett on my way to driving back out.
I think, I think we all want it to happen quick, yeah, but I, I also, I think we would be okay to table it, either have a special meeting, or-
Absolutely. Um, and I mean, we're not on a special meeting, I just, you know, but I want all the language together to meet what it needs to be.
Right, and I will call-
First aid statutes, you know?
Be a, be a scandal, bring you off the smart, I was this morning, maybe it's crazy sometimes, but I mean-
I, I can do a drive, I, I talked to everybody while I was driving today. My phone blew up.
I'll tell you, but you might be calling, you know, I-
I will be calling, I, I- You have my card, yeah, I'll make you do that, yeah. Okay. So, approve three-year with the language per Oklahoma statute, right, and-
I mean, when we went through our classes, they-
They do it multiple times.
Oh, I, I believe you, I, I absolutely believe you. You're telling me right now.
I believe about that, so, it was-
You know, instead of us, where it was, the first two years were free, then we had a minimum price for the last one, that's not a- Not a bad deal.
Not a bad deal at all.
There he is, on the back.
This is like, see how little she is, and she's meaner than the snake.
That's happened here in the nation.
Hey, I'm sorry, I called you four hundred times.
Hey, hey, I'm really, I guess. So, what's the difference between three and five? Ten thousand? Say anything? What's the, what's the difference between three and five? How do they do the leases on the police cars?
I might know that.
But some don't, right?
So, yes, leases, again, it's like a service agreement, it's not like we're paying seventy-five thousand dollars... We're not saying that we have to pay it, we're, we're signing an agreement saying that we're gonna pay X amount of money per year, we're not doing a, we're not encumbering funds for multiple years out, so...
No one different.
And, and I think, I think there is a clause on there, I, I'd have to research, but if it's, if they're on the state purchasing contract agreement, I think you're good, but like them, I don't think they're on state contract.
No, you'd have some sort of collateral if you didn't pay it, or if this doesn't-
Yeah, and I was trying to think, like, I have tons of contracts I've seen here, but they're all third-party contractors, they're not, they're not, they're not, yeah, yeah, all of them. I can't think of a single one that we've ever, all my years, we've ever dealt directly with the government there, always been third-party.
Yeah, you'll be thankful.
They all, they all operate the exact same.
Oh, yeah. So, the first two parties got Michael's money.
Yeah. This may be one of the records of the longest English in the world, almost.
When am I supposed to start you guys?
Not in the history, but just-
That's not-
I didn't have it on the agenda, but you guys really should have done that, and what's the matter?
I can't do that, it's not on the agenda. We'll have to do that during special meeting.
This was the last regular meeting, right? Okay.
Yeah, I can do it, man.
So, it has to be the first, the last one, that's-
Do it, man.
Yeah, with me, the fourteen, family goes back to morning, right?
Do it, man.
If it were changing or something, it'd still be this one.
But there's nothing changing for the most part.
Well, I'm sitting here just looking for it, and I probably, I don't see that on here.
No.
So, that-
I added all the references, but, yeah, didn't have that.
Good to see that tax pass.
Why don't you say it before you give it?
So, fun, that's why y'all are kinda killing time on this one, right?
Well, maybe, it's funny.
No way we don't forget when everybody's gonna let us get out of here.
Better hear singing, lawyer.
Doctor wouldn't have told me on a rug like this one, and I don't think he made it in town. Although, when I saw her, I'm not admitting I never-
Too many times, a lot of times, where you see what you're asking, that's smarter than you are.
I wish I could use-
You must be very smart, Bobby. Oh, man, I got fishing here, son, this one. So, when do we take spakers? Neither of you have to go to the years? Or if it gets okay?
Maybe it wants language, yeah.
She gets the training?
Yeah. Yeah, I get, I get it, so. Everything missing more.
Well, that'd be real nice. Man, I'm glad I can't see that clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to.
And they draw.
Nine thirty.
This is real.
Somewhere.
The day you lie on like a wall-to-wall carpet.
That's not nice.
It is nine, but nine forty somewhere. Still, I don't know.
Seven forty.
Seven forty, I was gonna keep that. This is you little-
Alright, we're late, we're gonna table it for a special meeting.
You want me to?
Alright, we gotta-
Okay.
Twelve D.
Oh, do you know?
Got back up, okay.
Oh, yeah. Man, I don't believe that-
It's saying big twelve, what we're gonna do.
Why don't we quit? Okay.
Alright, we're seven.
This is what she said. She said she wants me to talk to Garrett and talk to Mr. Ferguson, just like y'all do. But what she said too, is she goes, "You can sign one year right now, and once we get all of this done, we'll amend it to a three-year, and it's one piece favor, not all of this."
We're gonna, we're gonna hold off, and do it all at once, but we will have, we can, and we'll have a special meeting, so that we, so if all that gets signed up, then we can get it implemented as soon as possible.
Yeah, so, approve a three-year with the language for the Oklahoma statute contract, because she goes, "Tammy, it is just like what the, he was saying, it is a service agreement, but it is a contract as well."
Y'all aren't on spake contract, I'm not, they're all in.
No, no, we're not. And she goes, I, I said, "They want a three-year, but they know they can't have a three-year, can we change it to a association?" She's sorry, she goes, "Tammy," I'm like, "I know, I'll go like that, I know." She's like, "We can't just change the word," I was like, "I know." But, um, is there a way that we-
That's not what she said, man, Gary's-
I'm saying-
I'm saying, well, then I got her on the- And then I got her on the boat, and she's like, huh.
So, what we'll do is, we'll, as soon as y'all get-
I'll have your answer tomorrow.
Sort it out, and figure it out, and even though, I will set up a special meeting, we'll make it happen, and be done.
Perfect, 'cause I will have your answer tomorrow.
Okay.
It's, no, I'm just gonna talk to Mr. Ferguson.
Be more.
Now you can move on.
Number eight. Thank you, thank you.
Like, let me get out.
Thank you very much for making the trail.
Oh, you're so welcome.
You're not making a landmark for a verbiage. They try to show up early, that's the purpose, unless they open the door. That's what I mean, yeah. You'll, you'll be nice, you'll ask my wife, she's nice to me, she probably won't do it. Chute Porsha?
We'll, we'll, we'll be best friends for a couple of days.
Thank you. Look in here, play him, right? Are you already looking at hydras, unloads?
I am.
You know what I'm talking about?
I do, I have a list I'm writing, and I was so hoping that with the free dump days and the beautiful weekend, that I wouldn't have to start. It appears like-
I have a question, I think I got a different number than you did, on the value of property. But she told me it was sixteen thousand an acre.
She came back and changed it, and her first numbers she gave me was those, and then she come back and said, "When you, uh, how's your word?"
Yeah.
'Cause I took it straight off of what she gave me.
So, we sell our what? Special man?
She'd only had one other agent, she said residential size between eight and ten acres, commercial size would be about thirty an acre. And then she come back about hours later, to let me know, she has another, one agent contacted, that's all she had upon the property, and then she said, uh, after getting more information on the land, the land is about sixteen acres.
Okay.
So, she come back.
For the residence?
Residential?
Yeah.
Do you remember how many acres we have somewhere, or, I guess nothing's somewhere?
None, right now. A little over fourteen total.
Okay. Alright, forty, tell me, do the little, most, we will discuss that, and, so, you can write down where you were.
So, we'll just table that one, or, this is just part of our report, but-
Am I... Missing something in your report that go with this?
That's the line I-
Oh, it's the line, okay, okay. Alright.
Their buildings and business and everything.
Any questions for Chute Porsha?
Yes.
Alright, moving, may they hold on special fees. Lawyer?
Yes.
Charlie, make sure you bring that up, when we have- You wanna explain kind of the situation?
The county union city has ordered requiring, uh, annual inspections of oil wells and charges five, uh, four hundred dollars per well. Uh, at least, uh, one entity, uh, Singer Oil, wrote a letter saying they didn't think that the city could do that. Uh, he was referred to Tom Ferguson, Tom, and looked at it, and has written them a letter saying, uh, "Yes, we can, and if you have some authority that excuses your company from paying that fee, let us know, otherwise, we expect full payment." Uh, and it's due no later than May fifteenth, in the absence of payment, I've been directed to initiate collection action to pay that fee.
What oil company is it?
Singer.
Singer Oil Company.
Where's that one?
This is, uh, the person that was saying it was a-
I have three oiliers, I have three oiliers on.
Somebody that was never in it, fired up, and decided they didn't have to pay it, and sent Theresa a dirty letter.
Tom and I spoke to them on the, um, they were-
Do we need a motion on this, for, for these one?
Tom's already took care of it.
Tom's already took care of it.
Yeah, you know, you've been dealing with-
Just had to say it out loud. Alright. Eight D, Water Insurance Non-Company Charters, coming out.
I don't know if that, I've not seen-
You waiting for me?
That, when we were waiting on the-
Still waiting for me? Alright, fair enough. Eight C, Dodson Fiber, table.
Cool, I love that line, uh, at the last meeting, there was some comment that people had seen Dodson Fiber doing work inside the Union City fifty limits, uh, Tom wrote a letter to Dodson Fiber, ceased to insist, "Don't do it." I received a call from their general counsel. Stuart Noren, who assured me that they had not been doing any work inside this Union City, uh, so-
Does it realize what Union City is?
They probably don't know how to think of it.
They say may not.
Fifty to eighty-one.
They say, they say, they say, they try to do Union City servicing other accounts, so, if somebody will give me a location, I will get back with him and tell him-
Roger from Starland Ranch.
What's that, all you know, dude?
Yeah.
That's the one out here.
Fifteen and eighty-one, maybe.
Starland Ranch?
What's out of the room?
That, that was fifteen, how old are you, one?
It's the largest house between here and right now.
Okay. So, they were definitely doing business, they were definitely doing oil, or any fiber, and I saw it with my own eyes.
Okay. That'll, that'll give you-
Uh, alright, eight D, forty-one twenty-five Garrett Road update.
There's some pictures laying there on the table, those were taken today. The, they're no longer living on the property, the drop spread has been removed from the property. However, as you can see, everything else is still scattered across the property. Unfortunately, if you'll look in last month's minutes, I know there was discussion, and you guys voted on, the property hasn't cleaned up. Michelle's minute, she only put it, it has to be ridiculous.
Can we modify that?
What can I do, what can I do?
Can we modify that now?
What's that?
Did they have to pick up the trash at forty-one twenty-five?
Yeah.
But she left you with a note.
I do, I have to give it another ten days notice.
Think she did?
That's what, that's what I'm saying, it should have been done, she just did not give it on that. And unfortunately, I can't revise her minutes, it's her first.
Alright.
Thank you, and they have-
And they knows.
But they were supposed to be in here tonight.
Number nine, corporate use of lease.
Have the report, um, we did our body cam upgrades today, a little drupational. Doing explorers at the shop, getting upfitted, we have the Mustang car though, first week of May. And we'll get two ready to sell.
Whenever you get the car though from Mustang, what do you have to do, get it?
Uh, take it to the radio shop, and have Oklahoma City put a radio in, and take it down to a D-Com type of shop.
Cool.
That's it.
Um, traffic stops, two hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and thirty-five resulted in a citation, one hundred and fifty-three resulted in a warning. Forty-seven percent, you got a ticket, fifty-three percent, did not. I had a, uh, nice compliment on one of our officers, for assisting with family. We assisted a neighboring town, and she did a great job with the family. Number ten, corporate union city fire.
Has a report there for me now?
I'll tell ya, I was shocked.
Time to get a little more.
It looks good. Not quite as long as Adam's.
I'm long, I'm sorry.
Oh, man, poor guy can't get a break anywhere.
It was very busy, it's one of our busiest months, thirty calls, that's amazing. We're asking a lot for guys, uh, there was a, um- Well, asking a lot for guys, uh, there was a, um, situation happened with, uh, that, I don't have that. Okay, can we close?
Oh, Howard?
Not a good deal, but anyway, uh, so we had a big fire on that one night that was so crazy. And if you see a fireman, keep thinking, cause we basically stood our ground and said, bring it, sir, and we stopped it. And, uh, but, um, when the call come in, um, uh, it was on Mito's side, um. They basically went and said, we don't find it left. And then we got called to it, and Howler made his way down to the river, Officer Howler, and, uh, found it, it was on Mito's side. And he, uh, and I got to him at that point, and we had trucks coming. He stayed there and watched, him and one of the deputies from Tremont County, and, um, while I was trying to get resources from both sides of the river, we knew if we didn't give their help on this, we'll be mess too. And, uh, it did jump while he was there, and he, him and the deputy, it was mostly Howler put it out themselves. And they saved their butts, cause if it hadn't, if it, if it would've got going, it would've been a nightmare. It was on that river, it was where we couldn't get to it. And then we got truck down there, and it jumped about eight more times, and we were able to put it out every time, so you could see a flare. One of the few times I've actually been pretty scared of not being, you know, just what could happen, cause man, that wind was raging that night. Um, and, um, but other than that, uh, we were pretty lucky, we went to El Reno several times, helped them. And we know as well, cause they helped us a lot, so, um, those three structure fires you see were all in El Reno, um.
One of them made a big thing.
That's when you go. Um.
I was on the roof of a, uh, RV doing a repair, and it shipped the entire RV, and I was probably four or five blocks away.
That's the one on sixty-six up there somewhere?
No, it was in town.
Oh, right.
Down by railroad track somewhere.
We didn't do a severe weather, training the others, you can see, well, tried to, everybody tried to, that's the way it was.
Awesome.
How many other students did you have participate in CPR training?
I'm sorry?
All the students, all?
Yeah, they have to.
Oh, they have to, okay.
Yep, they have to gradually, unless they have already, like, babysittered or something, they're already certified, but they, they don't get certified, they have to go through class.
Is that statewide, or is it really?
Being born on what, five years ago?
Maybe one for board members.
You do?
Or the police stop, uh, you do, you did that stuff? Cause anything ever, like, I do a lot of hunting, and a lot of sharp objects and guns and stuff, I, and that's a class I've always wanted to take, but.
Last summer, there was a guy on the news, he was in, in a stand, and fell asleep, and dropped his leg down, and blew his foot off.
Oh, and there, it's way more than that.
Can you imagine trying to get out of that stand with one foot?
Me and my son were seven miles from the truck, and he fell into a whole cactus pile, that was fun. Old, old duct tape trip, close along. I had a duct tape wrapped around one of my lighters, and you can put it on there and.
I'm supposed to put a tourniquet around my neck, right?
That's a problem from the truck.
All right, let's move on. Ten A, Gregory Estates Storm Sirens.
So it, it did get, the work is trash, and it's really old, and, uh, it's not comparable. There should be a quote in here.
There is.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. So here's where I'm at on it, that's why I brought you. Oh, man, I have thirty-one. Um, in attendance to the bottom of the seat.
Does it have a court charge on them?
No. So.
How much does a bucket truck cost?
Well, you know, I've been actually watching those on the state, um, auction. Which give bucket trucks pretty reasonable.
Okay, so the siren we're talking about, everybody familiar with the area, Point Mountain Gregory? The siren sets, forgot where I'm at here, um, right here, which is kind of the middle of it. Um, we have another one, twenty-fifth, about right here. That's always been there, and it's really powerful and a really good one. So technically, they're rated for a one mile, it's one mile from here to here. Um, but that is quite a ways from the point of interest. Um, so the way to set up the homeowners association for building a new one, it has to provide those, correct? Not a hundred percent, but I'm pretty sure when they built this, we, we had it, like, one of the gig, um, and they used it. So I talked finally to the homeowners association president today, uh, they don't have a lot of money, they charge a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year for the houses. They put that back into the different things that he did there. They do have some, yes, um.
We already take care of the rugs.
Yeah, we got sued on that deal, remember, we all had to pay, huh, so.
Can't be scared of those for the city.
Yeah, but, but wouldn't post to be that way. Um, but anyway, um, question is, do we even want to put sirens there or not? Uh, this one, there is one here, um, you know, these people here, this is up on the city's area, they probably would benefit from it as well, they are humans. Um, but, uh, um, those, again, those are supposed to be ready for a mile. A lot of people get confused with sirens, they're supposed to, they're not for a warning system. They're not supposed to wake you up at two AM in your bed, that's not what they're for. Now, if you're right beside one, it's gonna do it, but technically, that's not what they're for.
At two AM, I'm probably in bed.
Yeah, so, um.
A lot of times at two AM, I stay in bed and everybody else puts.
But some reason people don't think it's real unless sirens go off. They keep you on the ground.
So what kind of legalities would we have, what's wrong with it now, well, it's not two, or what?
Yeah, it's locked up. He goes, um, then it closes the breaker, um.
Now.
We're not required to put them in a subdivision, the homeowners association are supposed to provide them.
But you know, the thing here is.
However.
It, it, you know, it's, it's what, three quarters of a mile away from that one being closed, so it's, it's gonna be iffy.
If it's really windy, they're probably not gonna.
I'm not trying to downplay it.
Does it need it, I mean, I don't, I don't know anything about these.
But everybody has their phone going off every thirty seconds when there's a storm coming, that's really what people go by.
Do we own the land, are these are at, or they're in right ways?
I'm sorry?
Do we own the land, or these are at?
No, they're in right ways, yeah, that's in a, full sack.
Would it make more sense for them to, for that, for this one, to be moved further south or north?
It's dead center of that, you talking about the other one we got?
No, if we, if we was to do a new one, would the new one?
No, it would be, it would be perfect for that area, it'd be a perfect spot, cause it's pretty much dead center of that whole, if you look, you know.
It reaches the most people.
Basically, this is the square of that, and it's, they're almost dead center.
So what do we, uh, what other ones do we have in town?
The one now?
What other ones in town that are like, what do you think that's on the breaker crap it out?
As of right now, everything is working without.
So all population?
The next one that's gonna go bad is gonna be the one up at the four way. As we've talked about, the new one is here now at City Hall. It's very loud, so we wouldn't have it. It didn't talk probably nothing to think, so we'll get it, but, but we wouldn't need to replace that, in my opinion, cause this one is so. Back when we put them in, those are three phase, but the reason I was there.
Jim, we take that one and give it to them?
No, it's three phase, it's old, old and three phase.
Like, that's a first round of manner.
They don't think they have it up there though.
Well, they can obviously swap it.
You'll spend more turntable on three phase to it.
Yeah, um, actually now, the new ones run on twelve volt batteries, whether or not. And they, uh, they'll run for fifteen minutes without a charge, and all, basically, all they're doing is plugging in the one ten and keep them charged up. They do that so if you lose power, it used to, if you lost power, it was done. That's why there's one out by the cemetery, that's C K Energy three phase, that's why this one's inferior, that's O G N E three phase, I'm not saying that, like, a D two eight. That's why they were put there originally, that's the only two we had. Um, then we got the one here, cause we have a generator. Well, now they're all on battery, so they'll run without power up to fifteen minutes.
Well, they swivel this.
And, uh.
Wouldn't believe Tom and them getting into the fall if we.
It still would be a little bit, um, he, he didn't say exactly, but probably, um, four weeks or so, time they gave me order and get it in, you know, swap.
There's nobody.
They said they had a little money they might could throw at it, but he wasn't sure without talking to the whole board. Um, I don't know what that amount is.
Do we have one in Kennedy Estate?
Um, so. Yeah, so just so you know.
If you.
There's one right here.
Thirty-six.
This is thirty-six, and this is the, their water pipes looks like right here, and it covers this area, Buckhorn Lane, all that. Then there's one. Right here, that covers all these little homeless stuff in this area. Then there's one.
You got one of the foundation on Manny?
Fifteen, um, there's one here, cause you know, this housing addition is in city limits, nothing else is. So we got one that is real here for this housing addition.
How, how many total, how about our other two?
I'm sorry?
How many total?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
There's, uh, five up through there, one at, uh, by the, by the, uh, we're starting with a fifteen.
Eleven capital, one's down right now.
Correct, ten working.
Okay, okay.
And then, um, then there's, you know, all through town. Um, we're overkill in town, which is good, but, um, so anyway, um, you know.
Sure, are these guys the only ones that do them?
No, there's different, there's different companies, and we've called them, but there was one sitting with us the other day, when I called, they were, they're terrible, from what I've been told, so, by the other chiefs and stuff, so, um.
There's nobody in Oklahoma that sells them?
Well, they're gonna be, that's the state contract price.
Uh-huh.
Um. But like I said.
Leave it up.
You got one right here.
Better to hire people than my.
Technically supposed to cover them, but, you know. You, you, I don't wanna say don't need it, and then you get hit tomorrow, but, yet, it's not supposed to be your only.
The Union City act.
Not, not supposed to be your only, uh, you know, you shouldn't rely just on a storm sire, they might not go off, you know, um, but, um, they are important.
How close is up on the city's storm sire?
I don't have a clue where, where theirs would be from there, honestly.
I know they have one on one fifty-two in Simmerall.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they have one in that fountain addition.
There's a big addition there.
Surely, Fontaine?
Fontaine, yeah.
Pond, or many pools, is that, there are big houses that do Fontaine, and so is what. Before we spend money, can you find out if they have one in that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can find out, yes, that's no problem, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm certainly don't know, cause I've never heard it, um, in, in that area.
I'm on their H O A Facebook page, I'll send that.
Okay, um, you know. Only thing, only other thing I can think of is we want to try to move that one, that's been there a long time, but, you know, halfway in between or something. But that's probably going to cost you ten to fifteen.
So on that, on that.
Um, then you, you're moving to use one.
Who, who built that addition, Gary Owens or Gary Roll?
It started out Randy Berg, and then he went bankrupt.
He folded, or whatever.
Yeah, he went bankrupt.
And their original H O A folded.
Yeah, the original one, and then, uh, Gary Owens came in there and finished the majority of it.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, we just don't need to waste, I mean, it's, if they're in our town, they live in our community, and it's a safety thing, I just don't. I'm not saying waste money, I'm not saying cut corners either. And moving to other one, like, I, I mean, if it's ten grand to put one up, it's gonna be fifteen grand to move one minimum.
Every money, you price, yeah, um.
You know, go for it, and then contingent on whether, where that one's located at, or whatever, if you got one right. And was they H O A willing to spit out, because, I mean.
The only other difficult side of that is, is mostly the storm's approach from, from the west, or the.
Southwest.
Southwest, built at the time, and we're, we're relying our citizens to be taken care of by the very outskirts of Oklahoma City, city limits, and.
I mean, the last, last three ones is coming within a half mile there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you just don't ever.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I, I mean, there were lives.
And we've got the money and, uh, capital prudence, but, um.
It's just that time of year, if this was.
Man, there's no way we can use the national paper.
No, sure.
If this was in the middle of December, I'd say we'd pay it.
Would the fire department be involved in that?
Well, we'll go, we'll go up, we guess we get here.
Yeah, so I mean, the fire department pays for that.
Um.
He's had a time since to. It's been not given, but, yeah. First of all, we've ours, we've been the entire month of April.
Didn't you say they would consider?
Said they would be considered helping, he told me, I don't say exactly what he told me, he told me they had thirteen thousand in their bank, till last one. Obviously, that's gonna cover, he said, like, so for instance, they're, they also have, so they don't have running water out there, they have all water wells. They have these big tanks with a fire hydrant within them, that's how they, two of them aren't even working. Well, in fact, one of the fire hydrants is completely gone, cause some truck driver was using the GPS, got in the middle of it, ran over it, knocked it off. Um, the other one is broke off, or comes out of the tank into the ground, cause I tested them this week. And, um, so they only got one, that's actually you gotta water in.
Only have one fire hydrant?
Out of the three, yeah, so that's another reason I was calling, was, y'all gonna get that fixed, cause we do ISOs for emergency, um, but, uh.
I mean, I ain't for these guys to end it. I just don't wanna waste the time on it, this time of year is my concern. I mean, I can make the vote, motions until I'm table, but you guys, I don't.
How, how quickly do we?
It takes four weeks if we make the decision now, so that still puts us at the end of the.
They don't know, but they.
Be made.
About the.
Yeah, we have to.
If we table it for thirty days, we're, we're going to go a whole cornet of people.
You can't tell me David didn't plan this. He's planning on our hard screens.
I, I'm really mixed about it, cause if you wanna go by technically, they got one within a while, but, um, and technically, they're supposed to supply it, so.
And so.
But in, in the same sense, I'm, I would hate my.
If we give her, like, ninety-nine, I'm saying, oh, I don't wanna spend no money, I don't, I guess they don't want it elsewhere. Yeah, so the, the thing that bothers me is the same thing with all these H O As. Whenever they built their H O A, they never looked to the future. Those rates never, ever go up, and then they want the rest of the world to fix their problems, and that bothers me. So with that being said, uh, what is the town's liability on that, that sign is not working, and it's out there right now?
It's, and it's communicated, it's homeowners association's responsibility.
But that we, we dented the first one, the town did, several years ago, and now we're replacing this one. But it's, it's still fall under that, uh, it can't come back from the town if something was.
You mean, i- i- if we replaced it, then it was something.
No, like, not that, but they replaced, and I don't even know if it's something we can do. But what if the town pays for it? Is there a way the H O A can reimburse us?
Well, they're paying the plans or sleep or something.
They'd take them thirty years.
Service amount of drivers.
They don't have enough either.
Payment agreement, on the system, one you guys.
My, 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 my argument is, is they're just as important there as I am here.
Absolutely, they are, yes.
And it's thirty thousand, and if one life is lost, it'd be risky to spend thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Let's finish, hope they pay us. If we put, you know, the law, at the end of the day, if there's eighty things, we're gonna pay.
I'll make a motion to purchase the storm sirens at Federal Signal.
I'll have a motion, I can let it press you, my second, all in favor?
All right, all right.
Pay, pay for them.
Oh.
Out of municipal.
Out of municipal.
Capital prudence.
Capital prudence.
Then you gotta say, we want them, cause you got two.
Union City Bank. Took your word about that one, wow. Or bank, bank, all right. All right, all right, all right, motion heard. All right, number eleven, Department of Union City Emergency Management.
Kind of covered that different thing, right, being that it's, uh, everything else is working fine, as of right now.
Number twelve, Department of Union City Murder and Suicide.
Ah, got one for. You know, the ball, might not happen again, we were.
Hey, I like that, I agree, thank you. I really do.
Hope it, uh, explains the water testing for you. So we will be putting out a letter in the next water bill.
These words is. All right, any more questions for us, sir? No, not. Twelve B, H O E N A, annual rate fix. Twelve B, O M A Annual Rate Fix. Uh, once again, they're hitting us with a rate increase of two point three percent.
Everybody have this paper? So, uh, we made this, and, uh, if you look, where it says twenty-four rate, that's what we're paying right now. When it says twenty-five rate, that's what we'll pay start on July first.
Yeah.
Um, right now, where it says customer cost, that's what we're, they're paying us right now. So, to keep it simple, it's just two point three, if we go up three percent, that's what it would be, if we go up, um, five percent, that's what it would be, with everything going up.
Now, how much is everybody else around us paying for a poly card?
Okay, so, Hunter is nineteen, right at twenty, and you were twenty-one something?
Yeah, I was twenty-one, I was.
Um, that's two checks, is, Mako's, um, right at twenty.
Mako with, uh.
Same, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, which brings up a question, if it can't be a year out, I wonder why we're married to this O M A.
Speaking of, has our rate of increase ever, ever since we made the deal with O M A, has it ever gone up?
Has it ever went up?
They, O M A gives the Union City a percentage of their dump that they get taken in to the town, Union City, cause they are in our neck of the woods.
We do either, do we? We do?
We got a host fee.
Does that host fee ever go up? Can we go up on that host fee? How many years?
When you check, if I'm reading right, I won't say you said it was five years.
Yeah, at that time, that was, that was a few years ago.
We're getting close, so at that point, we'll just tell them we need to raise host fee.
Trust me.
At least they can have that in place, yeah, if you're negotiating your contract.
I don't know what they're trying to go around with that, crick around the outside of O M A, but it's not cheap. And the roads been cut off for over a month.
Yeah, it's about ready to, um.
Think County Commissioner did something about that.
Yeah.
She called.
So, uh, if you look, on our second poly card, we were charging less than the first poly card, uh, but getting charged quite a bit more, not sure how that got done, but. If you see the pose, three and five percent, I'm actually pushing for a five percent, just because things have went up, we, we've always just went up exactly what they went up.
Yeah.
But my suggestion on the poly card, and I thought about this first, would be four dollars more than they charge us, just to break even, that's a dollar a week for poly card. How many calls do we get a week on poly cards, and have them change them out, and have them do this, a lot, uh, and then, so it would be exactly four dollars.
Who changes out the poly cards, you, maybe?
Well, I have, but they, they come and do it.
Yeah.
If it's like an emergency or something, I do have a few that I can run and switch it for them, um, or say they didn't get one.
Wouldn't you do that?
I'm sorry?
Don't, don't each one of those poly cards have a number on them?
Some do and some don't, it's just business, you talk like serial number.
Keep up with serial numbers and all that stuff.
Yeah, no, I don't, um, and then, what I put on this, you'll see that it says two times a week, we don't have any of those. So that's why we zeroed it, um, and I did six dollars on commercial poly cards, um, you're welcome, you can change that however you like, but I'm just trying to make, make it make more sense, um. If we, if we save four dollars, that's a dollar a week for poly card, for residential, and that would be the price, and then the, the three or five percent, or however y'all want to do it, that's just couple of numbers we come up with to make it simple, if we went up five percent, that's what it would be on the right, underneath that, oh, and besides the poly cards.
I mean, any kind of business, like you ought to be making a profit, you know.
And as fast as we go, it will be exactly whatever they went up.
Yeah. Thoughts?
I'm good with it. The rate.
Do?
Five percent.
The new rate.
Yeah.
Five percent, and then the, the poly cards would be in the four dollars, or you just wanna save the five percent total?
You want that?
Okay, five percent on all, everything underneath, start on the two yard container, on the poly cards, if you go to the right, that would be four dollars each one, and six dollars on the commercial.
And that's the prices you have here.
Right, correct.
We're still within what our neighbors, we're, we're cheaper than neighbors.
We're cheaper, still we, gives us twenty.
Twenty-one dollars.
And my thing, and there's a twenty, right at one, nineteen and eight years on.
So, I think, I think smart.
Yeah, I think we implement the exact new rates that are right here.
That's projections.
Yeah, just, yes.
Hasn't been the five percent below it?
Yeah.
Just a motion.
Now, should I pull up, pop ring?
Next one?
Okay, um, I, I make a motion to approve twelve B, and go with the recommended new rate.
David, are you any white dogs?
I guess. Are you leaving or something?
I think, I think it is left.
That's cool. Got a wallet.
They got their water, water box.
Oh, okay.
Their water be. Sounds like it's my car.
By the way, need to be open for a new truck, you know?
Surely, surely the police here quicker than Houston. All right, so, if we need to include the actual amount, or?
Adjust the rate, so we're going to find it, so, what I put.
Oh, yeah. All right, uh, I got a motion, I'll say, you have a second, all those favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Twelve C, Statute of Water Late Payment Process. All right, Water Late Payment Process.
I just said it to this, or any of that, it wasn't for, like, this wording, and it was, good.
Okay. All right, speaking of, speaking of some wording, I'm sticker for selling, um, the word service is misspelled twice once, under Article C. Bill for service, should be service, and then under eight one dash four dash, I'm sorry, eight one, four point one C. Is continuing service. I saw that one. I didn't see it. Does this new program, does it have spell check?
I'm not in the chat anymore, you know.
All you're ever getting from me is yes or no.
This is what we talked about last time, if somebody leave that off for a long time.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve. The Water Late Payment Process. You have a second?
I'll second, I'll go ahead.
Wait, I need, I need to fix my motion. I make a motion that we approve the water payment, late water payment process, pending correction.
Misspelled.
Misspelled.
I'll second.
Motion is taken, all those favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Twelve B, Coordinates Statute of the Statute of Water Late Payments, I make a motion that we approve it pending spelling correction.
I'll second that one, bro.
All those favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number thirteen, Department of Union City Animal Control.
Six people to the, oh, that's good, got six baby kittens at the, at the dump right now, Merry Christmas, um, it's, uh, it's been busy in that. Dog call after dog call, people running around dumping them, and, um, but, uh. Counting about.
Is there a report for this?
There's not, I'm sorry, I haven't. Um, but anyway, well, well.
Is there a P D report?
Yeah.
And where's the animal called, does it count?
And then mowed by that, cause half the time, I don't call in.
Yeah. All right. Number fourteen, Department of Union City Streets and Alley.
Um, grass is growing, it's ready to get busy with that.
Number fourteen A, Universal Survey and Mapping Letter Request.
We have two letters in there, fourteen, they're both under fourteen A, but two sticker each with the property that belongs to the town, this has to do with the O dot project on Highway one fifty-two. They're asking for permission to enter the town property to be able to, 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 I have a letter that they're requesting to send back to support them.
Have they already done this, that?
Well, this is.
For, for forgiveness, gotta do that?
I gotta see that.
Did I see them standing on the corner pointing at?
Yeah, he did.
I thought they held it all four heads, they could do that.
I think we should just.
No, no.
I don't know what they're doing, even I can tell you, I went and talked to them, and they said they're completely redoing the, the hallway.
They need to.
He don't know what, he just knows he's supposed to have a survey in Germany in forty-five days.
Been eight years planned, and it's supposed to be scheduled in thirty-one.
To redo it?
Yeah, to upgrade.
And.
Twenty thirty-one, twenty?
Twenty thirty-one.
If that means forty-two.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe, but, yeah. It's, uh, upgrading in the first. I have a second?
Second.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
What you got for dinner?
I don't know.
I, I'm a little bothered. Pepperoni night.
It's something about this. It might be too, so.
Right now.
Did you get him, you didn't get him a letter? Primal.
If you, if you turn that going northbound eighty-one, if you thug the first two, scout found lines, and then cut over to the first line, it's smoother.
Well, that part they're supposed to, according to them, redo.
That'll rally your teeth out.
Yeah, yeah, my, wow.
You gotta hit it in three quarter toner at one time. I don't have a three quarter toner, that's, turn it.
Still won't be done by Thanksgiving, so.
Everybody keeps thinking I'm going hamper, I'm hampering, I'm just pulling a hamper so it's smoother going. All right, number fifteen, Department of Union City County Dark Time Figger, operational force, Adam Lee, no purchase requests, uh, when is she expected to return?
Maybe, they're from the text, they're sending, they're.
I've been keeping an eye on the quick flip stuff.
Cool, thank you. And then they got the offer to take up the slack while she's gone. Fifteen A, A C O G delegates.
Also, uh, something I'm gonna say right away, I've got a rule in place where any emails that Michelle gets, she gets a copy up until further notice.
Any what?
Emails.
Email.
So nothing gets lost, and Michelle's out, she's getting all the.
Okay.
Don't email her about Kenny.
Those little things, but they're actually big things now.
Don't miss invoices, though.
Yeah, yeah. Um, consideration possible action regarding any designation as delegate, and also, also in association with Kentucky, Oklahoma, governments, A C O G. Chad, Chad didn't say what you quit last year.
I did, things changed, I'm.
He was our designated last time, Bob was an alternate, and Ryan was another alternate.
So we are.
I, I can't take it off, like, this is not an option.
We're, Jimmy's our deputy. You're supposed to be there, but I won't be there. Raise your hands if you've ever been there.
Okay, Jimmy did.
So, and we drink?
Yeah.
Okay.
And. It's busy, that's it. Don't, don't expect a damn report from us.
I'll be the alternate, I'll be the alternate.
Oh, Chad will be the, but I'm.
Does it both of you, or both agree the alternate, way too alternate platform?
No, just give it to Chad.
Okay.
We have to make a motion to him.
Yeah.
It's about, I make a motion that we make Jimmy the primary, and Chad second.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Come on for yourself.
Aye.
All right, Department of Union City Human Resources, nothing to report, number seventeen, Department.
You meant fifteen B.
Fifteen B.
And that's because you guys want to vote for some of these people you've never heard of in your life.
Oh.
Same.
That's your choice.
No, no, whatever.
You can no action in it?
No action.
I write over when no confirmation.
Number sixteen, Department of Union City Human Resources, no, no report. Seventeen, Department of Union City Payroll, nothing to report. They got paid. There's nobody in here that's angry, so I know it got paid.
Thank you. I'm happy.
Um, number eighteen, Department of Union City Deputy Court Clerk.
Let me tell you, you go do this if I saw you.
Pay sixty-eight thousand dollars, and it, yeah, gave a rate all over there.
Different pretty, pretty.
Hey, the zero cutoff.
I don't have a report for you.
That one? No?
Have we had any u- updates from the orders?
Though.
Yeah, I need to get one.
We're almost done, they were here last week.
Standing and addressing the board.
They are going to, uh, be done with by June meeting. That's what you said, wasn't it?
That's not what I said. Yeah, they said last week they were almost, they were finishing up getting their due to report on twenty-one, twenty-two, um, Jonathan told me that they had began, he had begun starting for, on twenty-two, twenty-three.
No, I thought, I thought. We're very.
Working here, buddy, also, we appreciate it. And thank you for putting this on your, about O M A, on your.
Absolutely.
Yeah, would have known that about five years ago.
I'll never know about that. I would say we're, she's, she's. No, it's painful and ugly, and I will never know about that.
Yep, and, um.
I agree with you.
I think we're gonna have to put something on our agenda for next meeting and invite, invite them for our next meeting, and just, we'll try to keep as brief as we can, but, this is gonna have to be addressed at this point, I think, it's just.
Well, we're gonna pick up the highway one, not wait and turn around and pay them.
Well, we can, we can air all that out, but we've talked and talked and talked, and asked and asked and asked, and it does great for a short time, and then it just falls right back into its old.
Yeah.
Thing.
We're just glad they pulled that through.
And, and I don't, yeah.
That's why I kinda like the, uh, I want. See what our contract is, and.
Yeah, I agree, but I think they just need to come and we can go from there, what's that?
That's why I like, like, where contracts was, if they're gonna keep going up on that like that, I mean, you know, it's the way it does, and they are bringing that to our home.
Yeah, I learned something, I didn't know that was something that we had.
We're gonna have miles to the east, and then bags flew.
Yeah, I didn't even know that was something that we.
You don't target Oklahoma City.
No, and, I mean, and when you go around, like, for instance, the one with Brian, all, they have huge catch nets, I mean, huge ones, I mean, I was there the day after them two big windstorms, and there was nothing, I mean, it was, it was cleaned up. And it comes down to, are they covering everything?
They make a lot of money.
At a time, do we, do we get?
We get a host fee.
So much cubic yard, and it's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
That's thirty-five cents a day on transportation, I don't know, yeah, that's, well, contract with the dump, like, we have a contract with the four dungeons right there.
Number nineteen, Major Station, no action. Nineteen A, no action. Nineteen B, no action. Number twenty, Mary Christine Report.
You wanna go ahead and be there for it?
Yeah, I would, uh, like, some different chairs, cause these bad boys are uncomfortable.
Like next to left?
Why do you keep both, you kept the other?
Yeah, yours is good.
Why did we lose our chair?
You want your other ones back.
I just done exactly what I told you.
Michelle thought the other ones were starting to look a little worn. They feel set well.
We're bored.
Why would the other team cost so much?
Good with quality.
I think the chairs are worse, so the meetings won't be long.
You know why?
I don't, I don't.
I would get out of touch, and I don't wanna complain.
You went deep.
I was perfectly, I was perfectly fine, and I was like, I can't see your seat.
I would be blessed, and I sit down, and if it gets up with.
So in that report, we would like some fresh chairs.
You want your chairs back?
Nice ones.
You want your old ones back?
Or at least a good one.
You want all your chairs?
Get some new good ones.
New chairs, thank you.
And they got some that heat, bumble.
You can take these down, put them down in the dog pound or something.
I would like that, some heated back ones, yeah.
You know, they make them, heat it back and vibrate, have you ever sat in one? Oh, you ever sit in her chair?
Her chair is amazing.
Thanks for all the slack.
You're so welcome.
All right, you could have been with Houston.
Any new business? I, I have a couple.
Okay.
Um, I, I visited with Teresa briefly and talking with OMA, last year, we did our garage sale weekend for Debbie Teresa, I didn't even date, June, June, middle of June.
First June, first.
It was the first Saturday in June.
First Saturday in June, when we had our, our free, uh, garage sale weekend. And then the very next weekend after that, uh, we would like to do another, uh, big trash pickup day, just like we did last year, the week after the garage sale. So we're gonna put that in the next agenda, I just wanna know the charter for most part on board, and then I'll try to set those dates up with OMA. So, we're not moving on tonight, but just, just a note.
Yeah, sounds good.
But the June seventh is done, so we'll go ahead and put that out.
Yeah, yeah, can you, um, for, for the garage sale weekend, I'll try to get this, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting to, for us to approve, pay for it. And then I will talk to David about the date. Um, second thing is, um, so I'm not on the, uh, uh, the booster club anymore for the high school baseball program, but they apparently are, are raising quite a bit of money, and they're wanting to do a sprinkler system, and the engineers have been in talks with David, and they're kind of, they're kind of getting all that worked out, and they're getting quotes on all that, so. Um, they're also wanting to move towards us doing some updates to the fences and other stuff around there. And, um, we can put it on the next agenda, um, they're wanting from us just something, a motion and a statement, basically, that they can make upgrades and improvements to, uh, the baseball facilities, um, because it's obviously town, town property.
Now, it would wow them to make good nation improvements, will fall into the Homesteading Act?
I don't know anything about all your stuff.
Well, that. If they make good nation improvements to property that they've been on for multiple years, does it fall into the Homesteading Act?
I don't know.
If that is a concern, well, the other side of that is, will there ever like a, a lease agreement, you know, done between the town and the school system back when, I mean, we're talking a lot of years.
Like there was.
Like a dollar or something.
Is that something that we have talked about or no?
A dollar a year, oh, they're old, hasn't been.
Yeah.
Just up in years.
You have them, or what do you think, or?
They used to be there.
Can we make it?
From where, I don't know where they were.
So, so that may need to be.
Make a lease agreement for.
A dollar a year or whatever.
And that's what it was before.
Yeah.
Make one, please.
Give them approved improvements or just give them.
So, well, there's two parts to this, I'm saving the best for last, um, there's a lot of that that they're trying to raise money for to improve themselves. Uh, one of my questions is, I don't have a clue, so you got something on Mary, I'll be aware, the two big windstorms we had took down half scoreboard, it used to be, we were having a lot of issues with it and wiring problems, now it's, for most part, it's, it's gone, the wind took all that. Do we carry insurance, I know obviously we have insurance that covers our buildings and things here, but does any of that cover structures on that property?
That's my understanding, the, the school owns the score, scoreboard, so if they respond to.
Didn't we pay for it? We paid for it, they're so.
I, I know, I know, I know, I was, I mean.
Remember that?
Some of us.
Yeah, we built out and some of that.
We paid to move it.
Yeah, we paid to move it, I think the bank had paid for it originally.
What, the scoreboard itself?
Yeah.
I don't have access.
I don't know that, I. I'm gonna gouge, I'm gonna gouge, it's listed.
Yeah, I know, it's listed on A R S or something.
Oh, and, uh, since we're just talking, all the sirens are now covered.
I need, yeah, where would I get a legal description of that baseball field so we can write up a new contract on that?
You just want the baseball field itself?
The baseball field and.
Just the, if you want, just want the field, you're gonna go through it. You'll have the whole park, but.
Well, if, if you look at it all, like, if you look at our, like, civilian land, stuff, there's like a, some kind of.
Isn't there, something where they can't sue a park?
There's a bounce, there's a meat and bounce thing.
Isn't there a, like a wall where they can't sue a park for getting air coverage or a number?
There, there, and, uh, they're, they're, what claims that is an accept, acceptance of liability, there's an acceptance of that, but generally, you're right.
Right, my point was, if you need things for the parking or not, but I think you don't.
Cause what's, what's weird when you look on these plots, that, that I have, uh, the, the town owns a two acre plot, a one point seven acre plot, and then the outfield on the north side is owned by Ju-, on here, it shows to be owned by Junior Booster Club.
I have no idea.
So which is, uh, was weird, cause, I mean, like, the entire outfield, not left field, but half of center field and all of right field is owned by the Junior Booster Club.
Which ain't even a real thing, is it?
I don't.
Technically, that was just that little area where, like, the little league used to practice, Jimmy probably remember that.
No, no, cause that's, that's, that's all, that's all west.
Cactus over there.
Yeah.
Center cactus over there.
Yeah, and that's.
Matter of fact.
So should we get the, the park, the two acres of whatever, the survey, then one of those echo lips?
I'll, I'll show you this, and we can go from there.
Make sure that it's legal, it's worth for.
Yeah. Cause right now, they have no, no scoreboard at all, so the Booster Club's question to us, and we'll make this an agenda item, was is due, is, is, um, how much the town is willing to put forward to help pay for it?
There's definitely, who's the junior booster?
How much, or he has to down low?
Yes. Can we?
You can go on the Canadian, kind of, sister website.
So, the, and again, we just got some rough quote for me. Huh? No, they're about, they're about, they're about twenty thousand.
I suppose.
To, to replace what we have now is about twenty thousand. So, they're trying to plan for the summer, and trying to figure out, can the town afford pay half, can the town afford to finish the thing, do they need to raise some of that money, do they need to raise all that money, and discussion that we need to have, I'm just trying to talk to you guys about it ahead of time, so we can, when it comes up on the next agenda, um, y'all have time to think about it. It's really tough for, and I understand both sides of it, um, they're constantly dumping money into something that doesn't even belong to me, every, every dime they put into it, you know, so I, I like the idea of, of the lease agreement and making sure that it's up to date and squared away, um, and then they would do that for, you know, five years, ten years, fifteen years, you know?
Can't enter to agree with more than one year.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. With, with money coming in, not really going out.
It's a dollar, I don't think it's a dollar, it's a hand, sorry.
Yeah.
I remember one meeting, them doing that, that spent a long, long time.
What's that?
Where they, where they did an agreement or something.
Yeah. There's the old ones that.
It was like a green, no.
If you, if you could find those, can you send them to them?
Between the lane and Michelle, I'm not sure, but I'll, I'll just give you, I'll fill out your question.
Junior booth.
And I'd like to find an old one, I think.
I remember a meeting, we, city paid, either do something to it.
I think it's very.
I remember, didn't like.
Because it was a school that had nothing to do with the town itself.
I think it was that.
I was going to, I'm not sure.
I'm all for helping school, my guys, it's my.
They don't have a cell, they, they, they on the website.
You want, you didn't want city account fund, but it was directly like school fund.
There's a lot of things that you can do.
Yeah, these are obviously things that happened a very long time ago, and, you know, I don't know.
Water meter.
No.
It wasn't a water, I remember the water meter, it wasn't a water.
This is fun.
All right. All right, you wanna figure for? So.
All right. Oh, good time, I was impressed, do this for me.
And y'all are okay with, uh, bringing back some, just some preliminary quotes, like y'all kind of have an idea what that was.
Yeah, and at the same time, I mean, are they gonna approach the bank about it?
You know, Amy's first has been wonderful as far as the.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, for sure.
You know that water they give David?
Yeah.
And Gary. And Timmons.
Well, what was that big oil pill company that came and cooked burgers for everybody and wanted to do some candy out here for?